I would like to welcome everyone to the July 12, 2022 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for the review and consideration, the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for their review and consideration. The agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning the agenda items and to request if needed additional information. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Mr. Wade, in his role as CFO and Secretary of the Board minutes, will now share some protocols regarding our public participation policy.
Good evening. I'd like to remind everybody, as a regulatory agent for the board, I want to take a few minutes to again clarify expectations for public participation at board meetings to help to ensure we have a productive and respectful meeting. The board invites and welcomes public participation at our board meetings at two times during the meeting. The first opportunity to speak is on agenda items only. There is also a second opportunity to speak on any agenda item one wishes that is near the end of the agenda. Per the recently updated policy, Policy 1.12, participants may only speak one time during each hearing of the public opportunities. However, participants may not speak on the same topic more than once per meeting regardless of the period of the public participation which the comments are made. Participants wishing to speak are asked to come to either of the microphones located at the entrances and are required to announce their name, address, and school or schools where their children attend if applicable. Statements are limited to three minutes, and any questions must be directed to the presiding officer. During the hearing of the public, we ask that all speakers exercise the appropriate decorum for the board to conduct their business. Specifically, in the case of public participation, all members of the community need to be treated with respect. Members of the audience should not interrupt or speak out while someone is speaking out during any portion of the meeting, as each person can and should have the opportunity to speak uninterrupted if they so choose. Please know anyone who has repeatedly fails to comply with these expectations of appropriate decorum or deters the board from being able to conduct their business will be told to leave the meeting. If at the end of the public participation, no statement is made, please know this in no way demonstrates a lack of care for the comments that are shared by our community. We want to be thoughtful in our approach and provide a response in a timely manner if and when appropriate. Again, the intent of public participation is for us to hear from our stakeholders, so the board and the administration needs the feedback to best serve the community.
Thank you. District highlights and recognitions.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, we are recognizing several outstanding students for their academic and athletic achievements. I would like to invite Ms. Nemus, our high school assistant principal, to the podium to begin the presentations.
I am Jackie Nemus, Assistant Principal of Mentor High School. I am joined this evening by Mrs. Tracy Coleman and Mrs. Patty Talarczyk. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize four outstanding students from the class of 2022 for their success in our AP Capstone program. Will Rudy Danda, Chloe Partlow, and Jackson Weber please join us onstage? Also being recognized but unable to attend tonight's meeting is Autumn Stockmaster. About to enter its eighth year at Mentor High School, AP Capstone is a two-year program built on the foundation of two courses, AP Seminar taught by Mrs. Tracy Coleman and AP Research taught by Mrs. Patty Talarczyk. AP Seminar is a 10th grade English class where students investigate real-world issues from multiple perspectives, gathering and analyzing information from various sources in order to develop credible evidence-based arguments. By learning how to conduct scholarly research and writing academic papers in AP Seminar, students develop the skills for the second year of the Capstone program, AP Research. AP Research is an elective for 11th and 12th graders, where students conduct an individual study in the field of their choice. The course cultivates the skills and the discipline necessary to conduct independent research in order to produce and defend a scholarly academic thesis. Our Capstone courses at Mentor High have nearly a 100% AP score passing rate and serve as a platform for specialized honors diploma portfolios, including the STEM, Social Science and Civics Engagement, and Arts Diplomas. We are extremely proud that AP Capstone has become an avenue for student publication. Since 2018, over 20 Mentor High students have had their work published in the Journal of Student Research. The Journal of Student Research is an academic, multidisciplinary, and faculty-reviewed student journal devoted to the rapid dissemination of current research. The journal seeks papers that are novel, integrative, and written in a way that is accessible to a wide audience, which includes an array of disciplines. The content of the journal ranges from applied research to theoretical research. All submissions undergo a double-blind review process under which faculty reviewers do not know the identity of the author, and the student authors do not know the identity of their reviewers. Tonight, we are presenting Chloe and Jackson, as well as recognizing Rudy and Autumn, with bound copies of their published research. We are very proud of our students for this meritorious achievement. Please join me in congratulating them.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Casella, our athletic director, to the podium for the athletic recognitions.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade. It's with great pleasure that I recognize members of two of our spring sports teams that reached the highest levels of competition in the state of Ohio this year. First, we're going to start off with our boys and girls track teams, who once again had outstanding seasons. Both the boys and girls teams won the Riverside District title, advancing to the regional meet down in Austintown. From the regional meet, several athletes qualified for the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Championship Meet back at Ohio State this year in early June. These athletes continue to impress me with their talents and their hard work throughout the season to reach this point. If I could have girls head coach, Mr. Burwald, and boys head coach, Mr. Dennison, join me here onstage, please. So athletes, as we call your name, if you'd come on up here, receive your certificate, and then greet the board, please. On the girls team, Annie Barrow, Savannah Dennison, Nora Kraska, Ada Zabo, and Mackenzie Stuckert. Our boys team state qualifiers were Dustin Allen, Matt Bedell, Danny Ferrato, Brett Greer, Timmy Hordinsky, Kenny Jordan, Ty Malone, Michael Petrovic, and Josh Risco. I'd also like to recognize three of our assistant coaches who are here with us tonight, Mr. Brian Butler, Alex Ardo, and Taylor Nepp. Thank you, guys. I'll take those and I'll get them soon. The next team I'd like to recognize are members of our girls rugby team. The team started this season with a loss, but then ran off a series of wins all the way to the state final game in Columbus. Although they dropped that game in the last minute to finish a state runner-up, they need to be proud of the way that they represented Mentor. This team and coaches should be congratulated on a fantastic season and have set the bar very high for girls rugby in the future here at Mentor High School. So if I could have head coach Vicki McGary and assistant coach Tom Wirsing join me here So ladies, as we call your name, if you'd come on up, Brooke Childs, Megan Clifford, Andrea Deering, Angelina Ferry, Lola Frenchko, Shay Lynn Herda, Haley Hummel, Grace King, Riley Latch, Ally Lloyd, Alexis Ludvik, Sidney Marino, Megan Mastronado, Lorelei Meggary, Erica Novak, Lucy O'Donnell, Emma Schilling, Katie Shoals, Evelina Strauss, Angelina Swank, Donna Tran, Olivia Valance. Who am I missing? And Cassie Rice. Sorry, I'll have to get Cassie a certificate. Congratulations, ladies, on a fantastic season. You want to shake hands with the board?
If we could give one final round of applause to all of those recognized tonight.
At this time, we're going to take a short break. Anyone that would like to leave may do so. Of course, you're welcome to stay. Minutes, we have the regular board meeting on June 14, 2022, and a special board meeting June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now, we have hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Hello. I'm hiding a cold, so I apologize. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade. My name is Lori Goddick, and I live on Melshaw Drive in Mentor. This evening, I'm speaking as a former employee of the Mentor Schools and as a parent of two children who graduated from Mentor Schools. I want to thank the Mentor Board for their continual concern for the safety of our students and staff by promptly creating and presenting at this evening's board meeting the resolution regarding not exercising authority under HB 99. Ohio substitute House Bill 99 allows school boards to authorize school district employees to go armed within a school safety zone within which the board of governing body has authority, which would be you. Your resolution declares and affirms that the Mentor Schools will not exercise its authority under HB 99 to authorize any of its employees who are not school safety and security officers to convey or possess any deadly weapons, including firearms, in any of its schools or on any school property under the board's control. In today's society, we need to do whatever is possible to keep our children safe. So as a former parent of Mentor School children, I thank you.
Good evening and hello. My name is Michael Paul. I have a 12-year-old that attends Memorial Middle School and a three-year-old that's about to start preschool, I believe when he starts at four. I attended this meeting only after learning about books, being introduced to students to read and learn about subjects that are highly controversial, such as Colin Kaepernick, who has gone on the record to say to abolish the police, commented to various organizations reported on NBC and NBCSports.com, which is an idiotic statement, since even you hire police to watch your meetings and take care of our schools. Wears clothes that are dressed like police officers with little pigs dressed as police. Very disrespectful to police officers and their families. Also, there's a police, do your research a little bit, police report filed in Miami, Florida, where Mr. Kaepernick, I know Ms. Colin, excuse me, Kaepernick is alleged to have, and I say alleged, to have drugged and got a woman in a sexual position that she did not want to be. It's in Miami, Florida. We don't need our children reading these kind of books. Bad, bad, bad representation. I'll tell you something, we should never have books by authors who are very disrespectful to any group of people, no matter what the differences are, especially the police, who most are good people, and keep our community safe and in structure. Without them, which may come soon, nobody wanted to be a police officer any longer. I have a lot of people that don't want to be police anymore, friends. You will live in a war-era Yugoslavia, meaning no laws, meaning gangs with guns and high crime, okay? So when we go down the avenue of letting these authors come in, disrespecting our police, and look, majority of the police will even tell you too, when one of ours does wrong, we will police them, we will take care of it under the law. So why do we have these books that are anti-police, or authors, excuse me, that are anti-police talking about police brutality? I had, let me think, Creations beat me up. Am I going to say all Creations are bad and need to be abolished? No. Okay? It's very unfair to the police officers to serve tireless job, which I would never do, even though I was on the military and I fought for Luger. I would never do an officer's job, and for you to allow books like this, my daughter and son to read, ridiculous. Thank you.
My name is Mike Williams. I live at 6064 Walden Court in Mentor. My wife and I have put four children through the Mentor School system. Dear school board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Wade, and Mr. Heath, if you are present, I would like to address the agenda item on collaborative classroom books being voted on this evening. One year ago, we were just here discussing $200,000 of taxpayers' money going to a company called Better Lessons. They were hired to teach our teachers and staff that they should no longer teach a curriculum rooted in whiteness. When the community was made aware of this in service, we were told that the presentation was replaced because it went in a direction that Mentor Schools was not interested in going, not interested in going. Fast forward one year, and here we are. You're about to enter into another $200,000 contract with yet another leftist company called Collaborative Classroom. This is the same company who tried to slip a pornographic children's book called George into the curriculum, which even you deemed inappropriate for elementary students. This company bungled the original order, they provide no teacher's materials or assessments, and hide their collection behind copyrights, which they, in the name of professionalism. For these reasons alone, we should not be doing business with this company. You're about to vote on an elementary reading curriculum that is absolutely not rooted in whiteness, nor in any American culture. It is a watered-down version of a world culture's curriculum that rarely credits Americanism or traditional American values, and at the cost of another $200,000 of our taxpayer money. Your explanation for the Better Lessons presentation was that it was just for teachers and not necessarily students. Your excuse for high school and middle school books was that the kids are older and this stuff is available all over the internet, so what difference does it make? And now you're trying to bring this political and leftist ideology into the elementary classrooms for five, six, and even 10-year-olds. These books will not leave the classrooms, and the parents have no idea what's in these books or any ongoing opportunity to read the books themselves. This is a sheer shell game. You have continued to ignore this community, you continue to avoid transparency, and you remain fiscally irresponsible with our money. Please understand what we are saying. If you go forward with a yes vote on this totally inappropriate elementary reading curriculum, then you are voting to destroy the chance of this community passing a renewal or an additional levy that comes onto the ballot. We're done. You are not listening to us. There really isn't anything left to be said except do not vote yes to adopt this curriculum. Thank you for your time.
I'm Josh Pollack. I'm a graduate of Mentor High, 1991, and I live in Lake County. I have children in another school district, but I'm finding that school boards around this county are really trying to change the game, and I don't know what for, what they have to gain in this. But for a couple of the But for a couple of the books that you're wanting to add to the curriculum for K through five is disturbing. I think children K through five should be focused on foundational learning, not worried about race issues, not worried about left and right agendas. They shouldn't even have to hear about that, and the fact that you guys are making an effort to put this front and center for children, their minds are molded at this age, and they should be worried about algebra and basic math and English and grammar and spelling, a lot of things that have been removed since you guys brought Common Core in. And I was fighting Common Core 12, 13 years ago, when my children were in that age, and one of my daughters did not get to learn spelling, she still can't to this day. But the fact that you're wanting to push a book, Heather has two mommies, I just got to say this from the United States Census Bureau, it says same-sex households make up 0.8 percent, let me say that again, 0.8 percent of all U.S. households. That's a pretty, pretty small number for that to be front and center as an agenda for a child that's trying to learn how to learn. So just wanted to bring that up. And I, in regards to the Colin Kaepernick, I think that that's a shameful act, that you guys want to try and celebrate somebody that doesn't deserve to be celebrated. The definition of a, of a role model, a good role model only speaks when necessary and acts when possible. A good role model listens more than they lecture. A good role model does not allow themselves to be deluded by their selves. A good role model should be a cheerful giver with loving heart, one who is always polite and can help others and never is negative. I mean, to have kids look at a guy that basically failed in the NFL and then decided, wow, I can be a change, a change giver, and kneeling and trying to divide this country, you know, the day he started kneeling for the National Anthem and sports, that was the day that I stopped watching professional sports, and I'm talking all of them. You know, that was my escape, I didn't need politics dragged into my opportunity to escape from it, yet I find myself watching all these school boards trying to bring division into their communities secretly, not allowing or not notifying parents. You guys should be sending letters out to every taxpayer that's giving you that money to go ahead and try and teach their kids to hate this country and to hate their parents and to hate anybody that might be different, because that's what you're doing.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Kim Bazan, I'm a Mentor School District individual, I live here in Mentor, and I've been to many of these.
Excuse me, can you restate your name? I didn't catch it, please.
Kim Bazan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Currently, I homeschool my children for many reasons that are happening in this world today. There's a lot of hate going on in this world, and just coming to these meetings in itself, I've felt a lot of that hatred happen, the divide happen. I'm not quite sure why it's happening. We're here to really be at a school that's supposed to focus on education, really, which means your math, your science, your history, your health, not grooming, not providing curriculum that's going to persuade a child of the age of sixes mental state when they're just developing that mental mentality and growing up. And I am a woman of faith, and I love everybody. I am a person that has many in my life of all likes, all diversities, all different sexual orientations, and just because I am a Christian doesn't mean I hate those individuals. But coming to these meetings, I felt from others a hatred towards me stating that I should take my children to a private school, when in reality, we are here, I grew up with a group called Project Love, not CRT. Project Love's about an act of kindness, having everyone come together, not providing what someone's sexual orientation is, not providing what someone else believes and whether it's their faith that's different. We're here to come together, not to divide one another. And I truly believe with the curriculum that's happening, what you want to see in CRT, it's not what the media is showing you, it's different from what the media is showing you. If you actually do your research, it is really a hatred curriculum. And you might disagree, but when you really see, if you've looked into Project Love, if you looked into those types of curriculums that we all grew up with at a younger age, not what's coming up in the modern day today, it was based on kindness, based on still even God-given rights to being just ethical. And I'm seeing a lot of our morals going down the ground, and I really believe that we need to just get back to going off with the last gentleman that spoke, going back to the basics, and not going into a curriculum that's going to really change the minds of our youth. And it doesn't mean by me saying this that I am not appreciating everyone for who they are or what they are, because we are all here to love one another, but we have to stop this divide, we have to stop this hate for one another, because every time we come to this meeting, there is a banter back and forth, and I'm just here to say that we have to come together in some way and stop this banter. And our curriculum definitely needs to go back to the basics. So whatever you believe that should go in the curriculum, I believe is wrong. I believe that we shouldn't talk about those different sexual orientations, and my six-year-old will not be here in the school district if we talk about those things, because he's not of an age that he can do that, he has to be 18 and figure it out.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Melanie Magikas. I live on Birdie Lane, I'm the parent of two Mentor graduates, a long time volunteer in the schools, and my kids did both graduate from Mentor High School. Speaking regarding the selection of the books for independent classroom reading, I just want to applaud the Board and the Curriculum Director for choosing this company and for providing a variety of books that students can choose to read. This is a choice that students can make. I heard a wonderful quote yesterday from an educator named Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop. She talked about the value of books for children, and I'll just paraphrase what she said. She said that books can serve as mirrors, as windows, and as sliding doors. They serve as mirrors when they reflect a child's own lived experience. They're windows when they allow children to see the experiences of others. And they're sliding doors when they actually enable a child to put themselves into the experience of the book and perhaps into the experience of another person. And all of these ways of reading are valuable, both seeing oneself portrayed in a book and seeing how people who are very unlikely are portrayed in a book. We really owe it to our children to allow them the freedom to experience this so that they can learn and grow. I find it interesting that people who talk so much about freedom and freedom of expression are actively trying to suppress the freedom of other parents to allow their children those experiences in school. Parents who want to strictly monitor their own child's reading, they're welcome to send books to school with their children that they approve of, but we don't have any right to take that away from other families. The freedom to read is an essential freedom, and I appreciate that the Board and the Curriculum Director see that a diversity and variety of books is essential to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm April Flag. I reside at 6181 Cambridge Park Drive. I'm going to side with what lovely, I don't remember your name said, but the banter back and forth is absolutely ridiculous for parents trying to raise children and trying to raise them to love each other and to get along. I don't think that, saying that I don't think that certain material should be taught in a classroom is the same as telling a parent that they are not allowed to parent the way that they want. These are public schools, there's multiple religions, multiple different backgrounds, multiple different generations going to these schools that they are learning everything. Saying that, no, these are not appropriate for children of this age collectively is not preventing anybody from parenting the way that they want. Now that being said, I do not think that any more sexually explicit material or anything like that should be introduced into the schools, and if you guys are planning on going with the company that recommended the book George that you said was not acceptable, then I don't think that we can put our trust in the Board as a whole anymore. That's all.
My name is Mary Jo Stack. I live on Independence Drive. I have two children that graduated from Mentor, and I've been involved in Mentor Schools for 15 years, 20 years, close to that. First of all, I want to bring up the fact that somebody brought up Common Core. Common Core is not a curriculum, and it was brought together by the National Governors' Association in 2010 by Republican and Democratic governors, so let's get that out of the way. I will say that my children learned about World War II, yet they have not invaded Poland. My children read Harry Potter, they have not become wizards. My children became well-rounded, intelligent citizens, which is what public education is for, to create good citizens. Many here complained about masks and closing of schools, but are perfectly content now with wanting to take their children out or homeschool them. Public funds belong to public schools, not to private schools, that can deny anyone of their choosing. Schools like government are not a business, they don't make money, their product is lives, not cogs. If you teach both sides, will the kids also learn both sides of 9/11, or do we only sympathize with the Nazis? This is the gripe du jour. I don't know what problem they're going to come up with next week, but I hope that we'll be able to understand that they do need to learn both sides. If your children are going to become good citizens of this country, they need to know both sides of the story.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Porter, Mr. Wade, President Breiner, members of the Board. I'm Bambi Vargo, I live in Mentor. I'd like to present two comments in support of the IDR books. First, in the June 26th Plain Dealer, there was a report from the Washington Post, quote, "U.S. continues to get older and more diverse," unquote. This information is based on data from the U.S. Census Bureau. This is clear evidence that the school district needs to continue to support diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of the curriculum, including by accepting the IDR books. The population of the United States is changing. We need to prepare all our students to be successful citizens in a new world, and the inclusive books in this collection will do that. Secondly, I'd like to share a personal story from my teaching experience about the power of diversified literature to impact the lives of marginalized students. In late November of 2016, President Obama was preparing to leave the White House. I was teaching at Boulevard Elementary School in Cleveland Heights. One morning, I escorted three fourth-grade students to my classroom, two girls and one boy. Two students were black, one student was white. As we walked through the library, one student noticed this book, First Family, and asked if they could look at it. And to be transparent, this book is not part of the IDR collection, but it is an example of diversified, inclusive literature. For the next 20 minutes, I had the privilege of listening to students discuss the first black president of the United States. They dreamed about Michelle Obama running for president, and they did not stop there. They even imagined daughters Sasha and Malia each becoming president one day, too. They were dreaming of an Obama dynasty. For my black students, this book was about the first black president, became a mirror for them to see themselves and to dream about all the possibilities ahead of them. For my white student, this book became a window for her to understand the challenges faced by the first black family to live in the White House. And for the girls in my class, this book became a mirror as they looked at First Lady Michelle Obama, an accomplished attorney and spokesperson for many causes, and imagined what great achievements may lie ahead of them, too. I urge you to accept the IDR books. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jeannie Kincaid. My family's lived in this community for 36 years. I have three kids that graduated from Mentor High School. This is going to be short and sweet. We pay our taxes, it is the school's job to educate our children in subjects including math, reading, writing, geography, history, and all the subjects they need to learn. It is the parent's job to teach morals and values, not yours.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Jerry Serino. I am the state senator for the 18th Senate District, which includes a vast majority of Mentor. And I'd like briefly to just talk about both subjects that came up tonight. First one is House Bill 99. And when we passed that, that bill a few weeks, a few weeks ago, it was, and there was a lot of confusion about what it was, and it is, I just thought I'd offer some explanation as to what the bill is about. I think the fact that you're going to pass a resolution not to opt out of the program is perfectly fine, but I do want to say that it was permissive and that school boards have the option of whether to accept the protocol or not. I know that in the 18th Senate District, which is Portage County, half of Joga, and two-thirds of Lake County, I did not expect many school boards to actually opt into this, because we have, in those counties, we have a very vibrant sheriff's office in all three counties, and we have very large police departments with SWAT teams, et cetera. But one of the reasons why we passed that bill was because many of the rural parts of Ohio simply don't have the kind of proximity to their sheriff's deputies and sheriff's departments and police departments that can respond to school situations. And it is those school systems that were asking for the state legislature to act on this and to give them the opportunity, if they wish, to develop methods that would provide proper protection for the schoolchildren in Ohio. So again, it's totally permissive, the legislature did not require this to be the case, and Mentor decides not to do it, that's perfectly fine, and that represents the safety of the community, I would certainly stand behind that. And very briefly, on the second topic that has been talked about mostly tonight, I haven't read these books and seen the materials specifically, but I just will say something that I said to in a meeting a few weeks ago with a number of superintendents from the three counties that I represent, and that is that I really would like to see school boards, such as actions tonight, making decisions in cooperation with parents on these very important subjects. I'd much rather have these issues dealt with locally than to have laws passed in the State House. And all of these subjects are very controversial, I would just ask the Board here at Mentor to listen to your parents, try to make the right decisions, and let's remember that the focus is on teaching the very basics, certainly to our children. We are behind in Ohio as a result of COVID, and we are lagging in creating job, careers for students to find jobs in the job market, and we need to focus all of our efforts and all of our opinions, certainly, on making sure we're getting the very best basic education to our children here in Lake County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Hi, I'm Ann Anderson. I'm representing LGBTQ allies tonight. My three kids go to the school system. I'm coming here every month because I don't, people don't understand that there's LGBTQ kids in the school, they're not going to go anywhere. I don't care how many people you bring with you, I'm not going to go anywhere. Everybody, I have so many people behind me and supporting me, so I really support you guys having the books, because it's super important. There's so many children that are LGBTQ, their parents might not know because of reactions like you're getting from the people on the other side of the room that think it's not okay to be gay, or trans, or whatever the case may be. So, yes, it is. Every month I come here and I hear about how horrible it is to talk about, talking about being gay in front of children. What's wrong with it? There's gay people, get over it. There it is. No, no, and I'm not going to listen to any moral character things from Jerry Serino or any, his grandchildren were the reason my kids had to leave St. Mary's. So I'm not going to listen to that. His grandson, who just graduated from Notre Dame.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Anderson, you need to make sure you're addressing the Board.
I'm not listening to you. I'm speaking.
And please, let's have respect for the Speaker. Thank you. Every month, please, please, we've asked, we've asked the Speaker to address the Board, and we've asked the audience to please let the Speaker speak. Thank you.
Yeah, or they can go.
I, I understand. I understand.
They need to go. Or I'm going to go, and then I'm going to bring everybody with me that supports us next time. This is crazy. You removed my husband the last time. These people keep interrupting me. That happened the last time. You said you weren't going to tolerate it. So they need to go.
That's right. They've been warned.
They need to go.
Please continue.
They need to go. No?
They've been warned. Please continue.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
It's time. It's my time. It's not yours. I'm sick of listening to this garbage every month. I'm not even supposed to be here, but I have to come up here because I get a notice at the Wednesday that they're upset about a book with two moms that are gay or whatever the case. Next week, it'll be something else. It's always something. It's 2022. What are we doing here? Again, the same speech. Here I am. There they are. It's going to go back and forth. We're going to get nowhere. What if we put some positivity into this? What if we actually did something for our students instead of came here and said, "We don't want to do this for these students or these separate students or these, and we're going to segregate everybody"? Let's not do that. Get it together. If you mean you want to get it together, then let's meet together. I will meet with you. That's the difference, is I will talk to you. Nobody's come to me to talk to me about anything.
Please.
Amanda O'Brien. I live on 5842 Tanner Court, Mentor, Ohio. America is a land of individual rights. And we honor all people's rights. The fact is, when I was growing up, we used to talk between our parents, not the school, about our private parts. Keyword being private. It's no longer private. You are taking it into the schools inappropriately. And as I have said before, we are not co-parenting with you. You need to stay out of the lives of our children from a moral standpoint. We can handle that. You can't seem to handle the basics, including cursive writing, including basic reading, writing, and arithmetic. Look at the scores that Mentor schools are getting. It's abysmal. I encourage you to please go back to basics. It's not anything about disliking what these people do. Their business is their business. Who they sleep with and how they sleep is none of my business, and I'm not judging them. I don't care. But I do care about how you take their approach and put it in the face of our children inappropriately. They are young. They are just being molded. The morals that we want them to live by are our morals, not the school board's and not our neighbors or anyone else's. Please, honor the fact that we have our individual rights and we have our liberties. And we want you to leave our children in our homes to be grown up and raised according to our values, the same values, I should mention, that founded this country, this great, exceptional country that we need to honor and stand by in all ways. And board, I recommend and encourage you that if you want us to pay our taxes to this school, if you want us to vote for your levies, then reconsider your actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Lindsay Wall. I live at 7250 Beachwood Drive in Mentor. I have, for the upcoming year, a kindergartner and a second grader. First off, I would like to thank the board for listening to us, for listening to how diverse this crowd is, for listening to how different everyone is and how everyone in this room believes in something different. There's a lot of diversity going across this entire room. And I think that you have done a phenomenal job listening to everybody and everyone that's not here as well. Because while there's a large crowd here tonight, obviously Mentor Schools is giant, and the parents make up a very, very, very large number. And just because they're not here doesn't mean they don't get an opinion. So while I do agree with Mr. Sorino about involving the parents' opinions on certain subjects, I don't believe that doing it just at a meeting where only a small number of the parents for our entire school system are able to attend is appropriate to do it that way. I feel that as you guys do your job with due diligence every time, you guys have listened to the parents, and that's why you have brought this to the table. Which brings me to the point of thank you for not teaching this to our kids. Thank you for creating a safe space and allowing educators to make our kids feel comfortable enough to come to them and express who they are, tell them their secrets that maybe they don't feel comfortable enough talking about at home. You've created a diverse school system where these teachers are incredible and the students actually feel like they can talk to the teachers about what's going on inside of their mind. You didn't create a class that is specifically for these topics. These books are not being taught to our kids. They are not being assigned or graded on. You're literally just providing materials in a classroom for the kids to choose from. So thank you. Everything changes. Everything needs to evolve. As far as Colin Kaepernick goes in the book, these kids that will have access to this book don't look at Colin Kaepernick as the guy who melts down on the field. They look at him as an athlete, if they even know who he is. It's just a children's book. But the news, adults, we watch the news. Yes, we all heard what he did. Some agree, some don't agree. That's a parent thing. That's an adult thing. These kids reading this book, which I will be honest, I have not actually read that book, but it is a children's book. And these children don't know who he is. They see an athlete. Again, thank you very much for taking the time and listening to all of this. I appreciate you guys and respect you.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn Mazika. I live in Pine Gate here in Mentor. My husband, my two children, my three grandchildren all attended Mentor Schools and got wonderful educations. And I have been able to see in the times that I have been involved with having students in Mentor, the change and the diversity in our culture as a country. And it is good to see that our schools represent those same changes and diversity that we see in our country. Our country has changed. It's evolved. Some of us are a little more concerned about it than others. Some are a little afraid of it. And I can understand that. It's hard sometimes to accept what's new. We need to help our kids understand our world and the world of others around them that are not the same as them and to let them know that there is a world out there so that they can critically think about things in addition to being able to read and write and do math. They need to know their history and the history of the other people in their country and in the world. And these books help us do that. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for presenting these books. And I also want to thank you for such prompt action on taking a stand on amended House Bill 99 and presenting that this evening. I'm pleased to see the reaction so quick. Thank you again very much for all you do for our kids.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Jewell. I live at 7418 Hart Street, Mentor. Raised six kids. Put five of them through Mentor Schools. We're putting the sixth one through Mentor Schools now. I've been coming to these meetings for the last about eight months. We got involved when all the big mask stuff was going on. I'm sorry to say, and I repent, and I say I'm sorry for not being involved in school board meetings for the last 30 years that I've had children in school systems. I wish I had. One thing I'd like to make clear, if you go back through the last eight meetings, I think you're going to be hard-pressed to find anybody saying anything about any groups here. I've said it before and I'll say it again. No kid should ever be bullied for who and what they are. They're trying to find who and what they are. But no kid should be forced by a teacher who's supposed to educate to accept something that maybe goes against their rights and their ideas and their beliefs. It's not a teacher's job to teach my kid anything but reading, writing, arithmetic, history, whatever you want to call it. We don't pay athletes to teach our kids. Athletes are paid to entertain our kids. They're not role models. They're athletes that entertain people. These books, I have no idea why these books are being forced on young kids that have not, cannot make decisions on their own yet. It's not right. The sex education beginning in kindergarten is absolutely appalling. And I will stand as a father, as a parent, as a God-fearing man, and I will oppose that until I have no breath left in my lungs. We cannot do that as a school system. Cannot. I would ask, and I would like to ask, that the board would start listening to everybody. And I think there's a big group of people that are being completely ignored while these books and all these politically-charged agendas are being forced on our kids. I have no idea where that falls under education, but I don't believe in it. My wife and I will raise our kids the best way we see fit. We appreciate you sticking to education. We appreciate you being transparent and telling us what you're going to do in the classrooms and not hiding things. And we know there are things being hidden. Please, for the love of God, listen to everybody that's trying to say, "Hey, we want the best for our children". And I'm not standing here saying that you don't, but there's definitely some things that are being done that don't indicate that people are looking out for the best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Gandy, resident 5462 Wickford Lane in Mentor. My children did go to Mentor Schools. I'm a Mentor High grad. And I want to tell you that it was very diverse in my time. And that was 27 years ago. Hard to believe. But I want to thank you for all the efforts that you've done and things that you've taught me and ultimately lead to my success where I'm at today. I do have family members, coworkers, and friends that are part of LGBTQ. I went to school with members here. I think things are very diverse. I would caution the board against accepting anything that's controversial or may create more confusion. Unfortunately, I've had to deal with children in the school system and outside of the school system that have been victims or friends of suicide in the school system. So I respectfully ask that you strongly consider what you're looking at and evaluating and that you find things that steer away from values that are reserved for family members. Unfortunately, some of the decisions that I've made over the years, my son is a Mentor Schools child that doesn't know how to sign his name. So that was a mistake. Obviously, you live and learn. But the point of this is that I work with police officers that are leaving at very large numbers. And if we're concerned about school members having firearms and so forth, we need to do everything in our power to protect and try to get more law enforcement, more people interested in it, and looking at curriculums of people that really make a difference in our community as far as the military and law enforcement and many others. But just strongly reconsider what decision you make because it has a significant impact on young, impressionable minds that can make some very foolish decisions, especially related to suicide and so forth, and really reserve those values to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Alex Dudus. I actually graduated from Mentor High. Currently own and operate a gym in Mentor, and I grew up here my entire life. So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight or anything like that. And after listening to a multitude of speakers, I thought I should say something. Now, owning a gym, I train kids from 5 years of age to 80-plus years old. Now, a lot of the kids that I train do go to Mentor Schools and go to local schools around the county, and some even drive hours away to come here. And being me, I like to talk about a lot of things, and I bring up politics, political stuff, in school. Now, when I went to Mentor, I had six friends commit suicide. And I was a nurse. And when I was nursing in the ED, I had three friends come in that overdosed. And it stemmed from Mentor High. It stemmed from bullying in Mentor High. Now, did I personally see it? I did. And I stood up for a lot. I think you guys, if you went around and asked, I was known to stick up for those who didn't have a voice themselves. My issue with these books is not so much with the books themselves. It's with empathy. Do these kids have empathy yet? What I see is it creating more divide than good. I think those books would be good down the road a little bit. They should know that everyone's created equal, and we should respect everyone. But do they have the right mindset to truly understand the books and what the impact will be? Or are we going to mold them a certain way where they're going to have one point of view that stemmed from a young age? And it's going to be hard to kick that when really they don't have the knowledge or empathy to see both sides of the story. What we're talking about with these books is mostly current events. This isn't history. I think there needs to be time, and I really think you guys should take into account and talk to these kids. Because at the end of the day, I think it's going to create more controversy and more bullying. But they should have the right to choose, and I just think at the right mindset and level and knowledge, which they don't have below 5th grade, really. level and knowledge, which they don't have below fifth grade, really. People are still gaining at the thirteen-plus years of age. It showed in a recent study, I can't quote it off the top of my head here, but it was a thirteen-year-old girl's study, I'm sorry, a study up to thirteen-year-olds, and it was boys and girls, and it showed that the women who turned thirteen were just beginning to grasp the full concept of empathy, which is putting yourself in someone else's shoes. Now Heather has two mommies, that's fine, but do they understand that? Or is it gonna be, hey, my mom has, or I grew up with two moms, and then they're gonna get made fun of? Now, that's my concern. Is there gonna be more bullying? Is there gonna be more controversy? Are they going to understand? Or are they going to look down on each other for reasons they don't truly grasp yet? That's really all I have to say, is take that into account and talk to these kids, because the things I hear, I, I, I'm going to a concert tomorrow, I'll give you an example. I'm, have a lot of friends who are trans, who are gay, who identify as this and that. I love them to death. I see them as a human. I don't see them as anything else. And tomorrow night, when we go to that concert, I'm going with a friend. I'm not going with somebody, I'm not putting a name attached to it, and she wouldn't do that either. So these books, really, you gotta pay attention, talk to the kids, really think it's gonna cause a lot more inju, uh, controversies, and we'll see what happens, but proud of talking.
Thank you. Mr. Gasky, could you turn off the mics? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Thank you. My name's Adam Anderson. I have three kids in the Mentor, Mentor School system. I would like to thank the board for the continued tedious work that you do. I'm proud of the Mentor Schools and I'm excited, excuse me, I'm excited to see the continued progress towards diversity, inclusion, and equality in the Mentor School systems. I trust the education and expertise of the teachers and the board in this school system to make the appropriate decisions on reading curriculum for elementary, middle school, and high school students. At no point do I think my limited information that I have in my day-to-day life can determine or overlap the experience and expertise teachers have. I'm 100% hope that you vote to allow these books in our schools. More information is better for these students, not less. Not banning books. Do, you need to give these children more credit than you are. They are very intelligent and wise beyond their years, and that's, that's really the bottom line. These kids that are growing up now have unlimited potential, and they're very empathetic to everybody. A little bit more information isn't gonna hurt. Let the children make their decision, bottom line. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Jessica Hardisty. I live at 7194 Hodgson Road. I have three daughters who are, in my opinion, so lucky to attend a school district that is caring, that is diverse, and who accepts the advice and guidance from experts in education and in child development to make the decisions that you make for our students. I would like to point out that this month is the 32nd anniversary of the passing of the American with Disabilities Act. So in my lifetime, George H.W. Bush signed the Americans, the Americans with Disabilities Act. Do you know why that particular bill had to be passed at the federal level? Because people didn't want families with children with disabilities to have access to public schools. They did not want individuals with disabilities to be represented in history, in their textbooks, in the books on their shelves. So finally, we decided, as a country, we are not gonna discriminate against a child who was born with cerebral palsy or what have you. Or my dad gets in an accident and loses his arm, we're not, he can no longer be discriminated against. If your kid reads a book about a kid in a wheelchair, do they become more sensitive to that individual? Do they see the world through that person's eyes? And maybe that makes them a bad person. Maybe that makes them a bad person. Could you learn about us, the type of behavior, right? She can answer. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot my word. Did it, did we, did we learn about puberty in school? I think we all did. What was it? It was like, man, that was a big mistake. Was your grandma right about just hearing about oral neuroplastication? What is that? What you're taught, because that is what happened. People who want to read books never read kind of history. People who are against progress and inclusion, never, never read the textbook. My dogs had a good school book. We have tons of books out there, helps their tater tots. Do you know what they think about it? No. They look at that, same way they look at, my husband and I have been married for 20 years. They don't care. They're just kind kids who wanna be nice to people, and schools need to focus on developing good citizens in addition to the basics. Thank you.
I have, I live at 7341 Holly Park Drive in Mentor. I have two sons that graduated from Mentor High School. My, my concern is that the moorings upon which this nation has been faced are being set up. Values that I was raised with, the values that I've passed on to my children have been to value life. And whatever representation that was, there was a life there to be valued. But there are also moral issues that must be established within that household. And in those moral values, there is a guardrail that is put into my children's life that I don't expect anyone else to move those guidelines with. The things that matter to me as a man of faith, as a man of God, is the Word of God. The Word of God is what hands me in, is what provides me with that safety. I don't believe that it is right for anyone to not be loving, not be kind, not be generous towards anyone regardless of what their values are, but at the same time, when those things are put into my children's lives and put before them in a way that, and at a time where many, we're talking about kids that don't have the ability to process right from wrong, and moving those guidelines outside of my knowledge, outside of the position that the administration, and here's one thing I want to say that I understand. I understand that this is not something that just comes from the Mentor School Board, it's not just something that comes from the, the teachers. I have the utmost respect for the teachers. I don't believe I have absolute trust in any person to watch over and take care of my children. I believe that's primarily my responsibility. But I want to say this, that I realize also that there's pressure that is coming nationally in the education system that they're calling you as leaders to act with. I believe there are Christian teachers, I believe there are Christian administrators that feel a muscle, and feel a muscle because of the fact that their position is at risk if they speak up against some of the curriculum that is being presented and imposed for our children. And you can say, well, you know, we're not making that mandatory. Listen, if you put something before a line you're on that they're not able to, to actually process and be able to determine, you're exposing them to something that can very well set course in their thinking. You know, when a child is coming up, especially in those middle school teen years, it is a very confusing and trying time for every child. They're struggling to find identity, they're struggling to find who they are. We went through that, I know everyone goes through that, but when we offer these reasons for it that don't actually pertain to where that child is at, we lead them down a road. And I, I, I will tell you that I've worked a lot with young people, a lot with young teens, I've worked a lot with young adults. I have, I have struggled in the past to find a generation like the one we're looking at now that is more shrouded in a spirit darkness. They're, they're, they're desperate, many of them are suicidal, many of them now we're seeing across the board are, are graduating to a point where they're homicidal. There is a real identity crisis in our kids, and I believe we're trying to put them into boxes they really don't belong in. And we're exposing them to things and telling them, this is the reason why you're feeling what you're feeling, that has absolutely nothing to do with where they actually are. You cannot do that with our kids. We need to be active, involved parents.
Excuse me.
Taking care of our children as we go along.
I apologize, the clock was not started. I started my phone a little bit later. I'm keeping track of time on behalf of the board. I will make sure that we try to keep things as copacetic as possible. I do ask people on both sides of the room, though, to allow us to do our jobs, and please don't speak out, and let us handle that. There's actually no rule, just to confirm that they can't, you shouldn't be speaking to each other, you should be speaking to the board. That's not a rule. You're supposed to ask questions to the board president. We ask you, though, to speak to us so that we can have a civil decorum meeting so that the board and the administration can hear the concerns of the public fairly. Please, thank you.
You'd have to ask the board president. Tommy has a question.
Mr. Patterson, may I ask you what you do? Because it was an eloquent speech, and I respect what you said, and I'd like to know your experience.
I, my school was rather being put secondary, but I am also a pastor.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Andrew Wally, 8065 Carriage Hills Drive. I've got two children. They go to Hopkins. I want to thank everybody that's here tonight. I, I think the main point that everyone here is missing is that everyone has children here, and everyone's children come from different backgrounds, and each one of us parents come from different backgrounds. I think as much as there is a divide in the public school that God should not be in here, I think sexuality is the same thing. Unfortunately, that might not be popular with some people, but in my opinion, it is up to the adults and the parents that are need to pass this on to their children, especially children that are young children. And people can look at me and say, I'm not diverse, and I don't have inclusion, and you're 100% wrong. You don't know me. I had a gay uncle, he was married to two men, he died of AIDS. What does that do for me? Right? So you would think that I'd be pro for this, but if my uncle was here today, he would be against this. He does not think, he would not think, and I'm not gonna speak for him, actually, but he would not, because he never pushed it on me as a young child. He was just Uncle Sean. He was always Uncle Sean, and it was always Uncle Frank. That was up to my family, and I'm Catholic, and I'm not pushing God here tonight. For anyone here who has God, that's fine. I have God too, but this is a public school, public schools that does not belong there. It used to, and they divided. If you want to bring it in, that's up to you. As far as sexuality goes, I think it's the same thing. You should probably wait till they're mature enough to understand stuff. Kids think of all kinds of stuff, and we deal with all kinds of problems as far as information goes with young children in our neighborhood, misinformation. So I think one of the gentlemen here tonight talked about making sure that that is being presented correctly to the children and what's there, and how that message is being taught. I know from me and my wife that we give that message ourselves, okay? That comes to us, and it's our responsibility to make sure that they understand who everybody is. And I, I think that's where the diversity and inclusion is for everybody. It comes back to the parents, it's not up to the school. And, excuse me. Inclusion also, and diversity, to these books that you are bringing to school, where do they talk about me? I'm not here to push my agenda on anybody. I'm hetero. I've been married for gonna be 18 years this month, and there's not a single book that talks about me and my lifestyle to pass on to the other kids. Tell me one that there is. Tell me one, one of the other little books that was very inappropriate that talked about discriminating against your genitalia. Where's the one that says, hey, you know what? Where's the pro? I, I'm actually proud of what I am, and I'm proud of being what I like. If this is a, a full conversation of inclusion and diversity, then it should be. It should be on both sides. I agree with the people that are saying we should talk from both sides, but where are those books? They're not. It's biased. It's diverse, for sure, but it is biased. And any of the training that any of us have had in our professional lives, we go through diversity training, we go through inclusion, and I'm sorry I'm saying that wrong, I'm not a very good public speaker, but at the end of the day, it's a one-sided story. I'm also Irish. Does anybody know that? No, nobody does. Where are we talking about the Irish slaves that came into this country? It's one-sided, okay? And it is a part of history. I'm also English. Where was it, the slavery that I had from my ancestors? I'm only one or two generations off the boat over here, okay? I'm not prominent. I, I, I don't come from old money. Where are those stories about me and my family and how they can share that diversity with everybody else? That's what I have to say. I think everyone here loves their kids, and I think everyone has an opportunity, and I think you should let the parents vote on this and table it.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Superintendent's report and recommendations, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A3.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Ms. Jesslin.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, this evening we have several policies on the agenda for a first reading. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary. Madam President, members of the board, at this time I am recommending that the resolution regarding not exercising authority under House Bill 99 be approved.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
You need, you need someone to approve the motion. Go ahead.
Ms. Jesslin, I think you said you motioned.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just appreciated the addition of this resolution. Mr. Porter was kind enough to find the resolution that we passed in March of 2018 and had an excellent discussion as a board at that time about safety issues and that we formally, at that point, also wished to decline the use of firearms by anyone other than a, a trained officer on our, our grounds. And so appreciate having that reinforced this evening.
I had a couple questions. I know we had a couple, a couple emails come in in regards to safety in general, and I, I'm okay with not arming the teachers, but I do want to talk a little bit further. If we're not going to give them that right, then I know it's in our safety plan, I believe, Mr. Porter, correct me if I'm wrong, that we do want a, a resource officer at every building, but we don't have enough police officers currently to do that. So my question is, I think there is a place, possibly Beechwood maybe, has retired police officers, and if we could kind of look into that, or maybe you have, and I'm just not aware, but seeing that we have, you know, three police officers here tonight for us, it would be nice to have, you know, that same care for our students if we can, if it's in the form of a retired police officer, I think that would be just as, as great.
That's something, that's, that's something that can be explored, certainly.
Thank you.
That would require a revision of the resolution, correct? If you read the resolution?
No.
No.
Because the resolution really only addresses whether or not we would arm our staff, and what the resolution says is that we are in agreement that having a safety, a security officer who had the kind of training and was also updated on that training, that would be my only concern with a retired police officer, as long as that individual is taking that refresher so that he or she is current on best practices and also on a gun range so that their skills and accuracy would be maintained, and I'm sure that would be important.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that would, would require a little more thought, you know, on, on our board. I, I don't want to say no because I haven't considered it yet or looked into what kind of ongoing training that our active police officers receive and, and what they would be not having as retired police officers. You know, so I, I'm not sure. I, I may be comfortable with that or, or may not. That, that's, at this time, what I'm comfortable with is active duty police officers.
So if I understand, just from speaking with some police officers who are familiar with the Beechwood situation, they're actually, it's a special unit, and it's only for the schools, but it's, it's worked out through the contract between the schools and the city police department. So the chief of police would probably be the best person to kind of discuss that with, with now. So I, I don't know for, you know, Mr. Tuttle's question about the resolution then, because it uses the word staff and not just, like, if we were to hire them, I don't know if that would fall under this, and this would need to be revised. I don't know if that's something we could, if we need to look in at first before we can table this, or I don't know, you know, what the right answer is because we haven't fully examined that issue.
I, I think whether we would table it or whether we would go forward with a vote on it, I think either way, I think it's fair to assume we can look into retired officers, we can get some expert opinions, including that, you know, of our own We can get some expert opinions, including that, you know, of our own chiefs, men are men are on the lake. And what I think I hear you also suggesting is maybe speaking to Beechwood about, you know, what they did to get their program going.
And if we were to go in that direction, if it seemed that we needed to make a modification of the resolution, we could certainly do that going forward. I'm very pleased to have this before us tonight, because the spirit of it is clear.
I also think it's important that we are clear in our stance at this time, as school is starting up in a very quick time, and we may have staff that, you know, are left without a clear stance from the board if we don't act, where they're uncertain if they're able to get a certification to carry or not. So that's why I thought that it was important for us to move forward with this quickly.
The reason for the resolution different than the staff conduct, because in the staff conduct, I know it's revised and it's just a first reading, but it does state in there right that we do not want the teachers to have the right to have arms. Have arms, wow, I said that really strangely. The right to bear arms within our schools. So I guess, are we doing the resolution because we cannot vote on the revised policy yet for the staff conduct? Is that the point of the resolution now versus because we'll have to vote on the staff conduct at the next meeting?
My understanding was that the purpose of the resolution was to make clear that this would not be on a case-by-case basis. It's a blanket decision, because in the wording of the policy revision, it indicates that it would have potentially something that could be decided on a case-by-case basis, which could add another whole layer of complexity.
That's also how I understood it. I didn't feel that the policy revision was strong enough language.
I think, in talking again with legal counsel on this, where it says expressly approved, approved in advance in writing by the board, the board would have to initiate, you know, this expressly. So it would be the boards kind of seeking it out. What the resolution does, it sort of strengthens the position of, you know, at this point in time. I think it's important to note too, you know, if times change, if sadly times get worse, this can always be rescinded, revised, I mean, the resolution, rescinded, revised, replaced, if the board deems necessary.
Well, it seems like, at this time, we don't know the direction we're going to take to secure our school buildings, other than with the part-time officers, not part-time officer, but the rotation of officers to our elementary school buildings. We have one student resource officer, school resource officer here at the high school. We're basically unprotected. But in addition to that, let me just read what the first policy change was submitted that seemed to me was adequate at this time, and not going as so far as to process, and the statement that says, "Whereas the board expressly does not authorize any school district employee who is not a school safety and security officer go armed within a school safety zone." That's saying right away that we are going to say, "We give our right to vote to put," and I'm not talking about, I'm supporting a school teacher carrying a weapon, "but other than an individual to be armed in our school and accept all of that training and everything else." I don't want to give up my right to vote to something that could change in a month, two months, just as our COVID mask situation impacted us when we voted, not to have a board vote on the COVID mask. So, let me read the policy change that was submitted, and I find this very acceptable, without giving away my vote to, my right to vote. Unless otherwise authorized by law and expressly approved in advance in writing by the board in accordance with the procedures set forth in Ohio Revised Code 2923.122, district employees are not permitted to bring or possess a deadly weapon or dangerous ordinance in a school safety zone, as defined by Ohio Revised Code. That tells it perfectly clear, we don't want a teacher to do it, correct? But that does not say we will not employ retired police officers.
But that would still be a safety or security officer, they're just in a retired status. So the resolution is in the same spirit of what our earlier resolution discussion that we had in March of 2018. At that time, Mr. Porter read an eloquent description of school safety and the initiatives that would be important to accomplishing that. And at that point, there was discussion among us, and it was Mrs. Roberts and Mr. Buckley at the time was on the board with you, Mr. Tuttle, and Mrs. Breiner, and myself, and the feeling was, or what was said in that, that meeting, was that we were pleased that we did not permit guns to be carried by anyone other than our own police officers. And certainly when we had some of Mrs. Cook's excellent, her discussion that she initiated last meeting was very well worded, and we had a number of parents reiterating their support for that as well. So in my mind, I feel better with the resolution, but as Mr. Porter said, going forward, if there was a change, let's say we decided to have a crew of retired police officers who would serve in that capacity in our building, we could modify, rescind, or change, whatever we needed to do to make that happen. But it still puts in, in place, high standards of preparation and training that I think reduce liability, where, you know, some awful misstep could cause more harm than good. So that's just my, my opinion, that the resolution is worth doing.
My concern with the first reading on our revised policy where we're adding in the staff conduct, so again, Mr. Tuttle, you read, unless otherwise authorized by law and expressly approved in advance in writing by the board, in accordance with the procedures set forth in Ohio Revised Code, district employees are not permitted to bring or possess a deadly weapon. However, because of House Bill 99, it is authorized by law, if expressly approved in advance in writing by the board. And it doesn't give us anything here that tells us what our minimum standards are for allowing people to, what kind of training that we are using as our minimum standard for carrying weapons into the district. Right now, the law allows 25 hours of training, mostly online, which is less than a baseball umpire receives. I feel that it is a liability to our district, and that is why we were discussing, you know, as a board at the last meeting, that it would be, at this time, a trained officer. And, and I hear, you know, the idea, I would love to have school resource officers in every building, that is my ultimate goal. We don't have enough police officers right now to do that, and I, and I'm open to looking at other things in the future, but right now I'd like to see some, some minimum standards. And that's why I felt that the resolution was important to add on to this.
Can we just back up a second? We currently have how many school resources and our resource officers in our district?
We have one trained school resource officer who serves at the high school every single day. It's the same officer. We've had him for years, Officer Scaly. And then we have a second officer at the high school every day. That's a rotating officer, so that's, that's a different person each day, who is working outside of their hours. There are mentor police, but it's different people. We also have one rotating officer at the middle school each day. Actually, it's two, but one at a time. So we have, at each middle school, we have someone serving from 8 to 12, and a different officer serving from noon to four. Those rotate through, they sign up for that on their outside hours. The same thing at Ridge Middle School, being our largest elementary school across from the mall. The goal originally was to eventually get officers at each building, but as we talked with the police and, you know, the labor shortage kicked in in almost every field of work, police work being no exception, you know, mentor, mentor police, they're having trouble just finding enough officers to serve the needs that we have here in the city, much less putting enough officers, you know, at our buildings each day. So we've, we've met with the city regularly, just to get updates on that, and unfortunately we've not been able to continue to add. So, you know, there may be some, excuse me, creative options. We have for, you know, looking at some alternatives that the board would be comfortable with.
So we currently have four schools covered?
Four schools covered with five people.
And are they armed?
They are armed.
So according to our resolution that we're proposing, would they fall under the category of school safety and security officers, or law enforcement officers?
They, they would be fine.
And we're saying they can be armed under this resolution?
Our resolution would, would not in any way prohibit them from continuing to carry.
So if we were to expand and add additional officers under this resolution, this would allow them to be armed?
Yes.
If it's additional officers, yes. If we were to modify the resolution, we, I mean, that's an option at any time.
So right now, the way I see it, this resolution covers us for what we have now. I think we're talking about a separate discussion, which means adding additional officers, exploring that option, whether, you know, what kind of training we want them to have, and are they going to be armed? But this would cover them if they're going to be armed.
So then what you're telling me is, we really don't need the resolution to say, "We are going to vote, give up our right to vote on the possibility of voting on an issue." We're going to close it out right now, today, that we will never, and I'm, we've already said in a policy revision that says, "No employees of men are schools will be allowed to carry a weapon."
Teachers and staff.
And that's a perfect resolution.
Teachers and staff.
That's right.
That's what we discussed.
I have absolutely no problem with that. I just have this problem with this statement that expressly does not authorize any school district employee. The board expressly does not authorize any school district employee. And any revisions of this would require a vote if something should change.
But the, if we hired retired police officers?
Again, that's an if. Now, Senator Sereno explained exactly, very eloquently, the issue. Am I not correct? You heard him, what he said about, this was really directed toward the rural community. And what, what is their issue? They don't have enough policemen. It's only in a wider network they don't have the policemen. We're in a smaller network, and we don't have enough policemen to cover all the buildings. That's, that's my logic behind this. I don't want to give up the right to say, "We may have an employee, male or female, who is very qualified, and a number of male or female employees, very qualified to carry a weapon." And the training, initial 20, 25 hours of training to someone who already has a great deal of experience with handguns?
So Tom, you're saying you are okay with a staff member or a teacher?
No. I'm saying in the policy, we, the policy is fine, the way it's written, we don't support it, but we're not giving up the right to putting, accepting an application. If the case comes up, we can say, "No, we're not going to interview the five people who applied to be carrying a weapon." But there may be a situation, two years from now, that is so bad that it indicates we're not going to have police coverage at every building.
So then at that time, could we revise the policy to say, "We're done with it," or rescind it, so that if, let's say, we don't have enough police officers at all, we go down to zero or whatnot, and we have somebody else that might, you know, be fit for that, like, let's say, a janitor who used to be a police officer, something like that? You're saying you would like them, you would still like to have the right at that point to review what they're saying and?
Yes.
Depending on if it changes down the road? But can't we still rescind that policy at that point, then?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
The board has the right to rescind a policy and vote a policy out or change it at any time, and you can actually, as a board, skip going through two readings in an emergency situations.
Okay. That's good to know. So we could skip, say it again, Mr. Wade, you said we can skip in emergen, if there was an emergency?
In emergency situations, the board can forego two readings, you know, a reading of a policy and go into, yeah, to vote on it, yes.
And then, Mr. Porter, you said you would look into the, the retired police officer thing, possibly?
We can begin to look into that. Yes, I mean, that's, that would be a bit of, a little bit of a process, but I mean, that's certainly something we can explore.
Okay.
Any more discussion? We've got our first and second motion, correct?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
This is a vote on the right again? Tell me exactly what we're voting on.
To approve the resolution regarding not accessorizing the authority of House Bill 99 as written.
No.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I have the following policy on the agenda for a second reading and recommend approval of policy 1.15.
I just have one que, do we have to, wait, do the motion first? Yes, so moved.
Second discussion?
I just had a question, and I had addressed it to Mr. Porter earlier this week, that a plan for the safety responsibilities that Mrs. Skolski had been responsible for, that's in process of, that's why the organizational chart doesn't reflect that yet.
Correct. And your organizational chart actually gets updated, it gets revised fairly often, because as the needs of the district change, you know, the organizational chart changes. So we are in discussion on that as soon as there's, you know, some, someone assigned to the safety role. We would want to add that.
Okay. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the 2223 Parent-Student Handbooks for the preschool, elementary school, middle schools, high school, and cares.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Before I recommend the next item, I want to share a few thoughts about the collaborative classroom book libraries for classrooms. This collection of over 1,400 books is helping to replenish leveled reading selections for students in grades K through 5. We went through a new recently adopted process to review the collection, along with a separate career tech resource. The review consisted of sending an email to the parents and guardians of the students at the elementary level. to the parents and guardians of the students at the elementary level to come and personally inspect the materials at Paradigm and leave comment cards with us, so we could have some immediate feedback. Over 4,000 emails went out to elementary parents and guardians, and only three people came in and looked at the books, or four people came in and looked at the books, and three comment cards were left. Two were in favor of the books, one was not. Most, if not all, of our board members also looked through the collection. In addition, our board curriculum liaisons, Mrs. Payne and Ms. Jesslyn, met with our curriculum department to discuss concerns about a few of the books, and I spoke with both board members to hear their thoughts. Ultimately, I have, I have to make a recommendation. I am recommending that the full collection be adopted for the classroom, classrooms for the following reasons. First, our literacy committee in the district recommended the adoption, and I trust the care and thoughtfulness that they put into the process. Out of the 4,000 emails, very few people came in and inspected or expressed concerns about the books. Any large collection of books we order in the future from companies could potentially contain terms, words, questionable facts, or topics some see as inappropriate for school. Most of the concerns raised were about specific content on wording, and many of those concerns focused on one page in a couple of the different books. I also believe that it's a dangerous precedent to set, a dangerous precedent to set to exclude singular books from a large collection, as it will be an impossible task for our curriculum department or literacy committee to ever select a collection that everyone agrees with every word in every book. In addition, as another effort to be transparent at Meet the Teacher Nights coming up soon, elementary parents and guardians will be invited again to look at the classroom reading sets. I respect the differences of opinion. I appreciate the discussions we've had about the materials, and I fully respect and accept whatever the decision, whatever decision the board renders. Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I am recommending that the following curriculum items be approved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would like to, I think it's important for me to explain my position on this. I took a look at the books in great detail. There were certainly an array of books which I do agree with and found to be acceptable. While I respect the rights of other board members to have a differing opinion on this topic, I have some concerns that I do feel outweigh the benefits. First, the collection was curated by a company in California who found it suitable to include a book called George in the original assortment. The board and administration agreed this book was grossly inappropriate for elementary school and was ultimately removed from the collection by the administration and the board, once it was brought to their attention. While this situation allowed us to review our policies to ensure we better vet curriculum materials and has resulted in better transparency, I find it difficult to trust the company and do not find it fiscally responsible to support them with $192,000 taxpayer dollars. Additionally, there were several, several topics from the handful of books that I was able to review, which parents and community members feel are inappropriate for the elementary school level. Some of the books mention sexuality, and others call for activism and focus on supporting a controversial political movement. Schools should offer a well-rounded education that includes differing viewpoints. However, it is not their role to persuade students to believe in one ideology over the other. These topics are out of the scope of responsibility of the school and should be left for the parents or guardians to discuss at their discretion when they deem it appropriate. Our Board Policy 7.25 regarding library items states that "The library shall with no thought towards swaying reader judgment, make available basic, primary, and factual material information on the level of their reading public, on any ideology or philosophy of government which exerts or has exerted a strong force either favorable or unfavorable in government, current events, politics, education, or any phase of life." There are several books that would violate this policy if they are put in the classroom, library. It's my duty to speak up on behalf of those who trusted me and helped to place me into this position. I have heard very loudly from them, and I empathize with my constituents who feel that this company and some of these books are not suited for elementary-age students. I recently read a book called The Hiding Place by Corey Ten Boom, and in it, the younger daughter is asking the father some profound questions. And he responded to her by saying, "Some knowledge is too heavy for children. When you're older and stronger, you can bear it. For now, you must trust me to carry it for you." With some of these books, we are asking our children to carry loads that are far too heavy for them. It's our responsibility to ensure we are protecting their innocence and not compelling them to see the world through the eyes of an adult. Therefore, I respectfully disagree with the decision to adopt the collaborative classrooms K through five libraries.
I think one additional consideration empowers a parent who, during the visit to their child's classroom this fall, there's a procedure in place should a parent have an objection to an individual title out of the roughly 250 that would be available for each grade level.
But that parent would have to know that the books were in there first, so they would have to go and look at those books on, like, Meet the Teacher Night and examine the library, right?
That's correct. Plus, the response rate out of the 4,000 emails that were sent to parents and guardians being relatively low, and those books have been on display for months, would give people an opportunity to express their concern and could have filled out comment cards, because those were also available through that whole time period. So I look at 1,400 books, and whatever number an individual might find contrary to their preference, there wasn't anything, I agree that the George book was wholly inappropriate, and that's been replaced, as was said. As far as the other titles in the series, having looked at them thoughtfully and carefully, as I know everybody has from our, our board members, there's a wealth of high-quality material. They're self-selected by the student. Out of the course of the 35 weeks that they're in school, let's say, they read two a week out of the collection for their silent reading time daily, that means that a student might read roughly 70 books out of the 250. Given that proportion, and having been a librarian for a large part of my career, the likelihood that a student chooses something that tends to be a fairly heavy topic is low. Most children pick things that are high interest, you know, whether it's scary bugs, or cute animals, or stories about fairies and fun. So my feeling is that a parent still retains control, but that the collection, as it's gathered and curated, and having been looked at by our literacy committee and thoughtfully discussed, deserves to be approved.
My concern is, you know, we just talked about how hard it is to get police officers, and, and how they're struggling in that department. And then we have a book, you know, that, that says news of police officers killing people of color have become more common in the past few years. That's, that, to me, that's heavy. For, I have a nine-year-old and a five-year-old. If they were to read that, that, that weighs heavy on them, you know, and they may, it may skew the way that they look at police officers. And I feel like that is something that I wouldn't want him reading in school by himself, and then me not even knowing that he read it, and then one day him saying, you know, "Oh, I heard about police officers and how they kill people that are people of color." And that is an intense conversation to have with my child without me having the book in front of them and me having the opportunity to kind of walk them through that and, and speak to it. So it's, it's not just a book about Colin Kaepernick. It, we have books in a series that range from, I'm going to say this name wrong, it's the basketball player, Curry.
Steph.
Yes. And, and that book is fine. It talks about, you know, things that are not heavy topics, and, and it does have pieces of activism, activism in there, but I didn't find that to, I didn't oppose that. It's the, the fact that we have, you know, statements in here about Donald Trump and that his speeches were race, had racist overtones, and he stoked fears of immigrants and minorities. These are heavy topics. These are topics where, if I had a Trump sign in my yard, and my child comes home, and they're like, "Hey, Mom, you know, why do you support him?" When I just read a book that talks about how he was terrible, and he had, you know, stoked fears of immigrants, "Why are you doing that, Mom?" It can make him look at his parents differently as well. And I just don't think that these topics are suited for elementary school. These are not high school, you know, kids. These are, these are elementary school kids. These are young children who are still seeing the world through their, their innocent eyes. They don't need these heavy topics, which are hard for me sitting up here to even talk about, because I know there's people on both sides, and it's tough. So to have my son, or my daughter at young ages, you know, reading this, I just feel like these are too heavy, and they're, the topics are inappropriate.
I'd like to read something out of the Colin Kaepernick book, if I may. Page 21, in reference to two women who started Black Lives Matter. Colors in Opel Tomedi started Black Lives Matters in 2013 in response to the killing of black teen Trayvon Martin in Florida by Neighborhood Watch volunteer George Zimmerman. The movement gained attention after another unarmed black teenage boy was shot and killed in police, by police in Ferguson, Missouri in the summer of 2014. What started as a hashtag, hashtag Black Lives Matter, grew into a global organization with the mission of ending violence inflicted on black communities. Kaepernick wanted to join this mission. What's important in reading this, I don't know how many of you heard the results of, the final results that was released to the media on those two murders. In both cases, both individuals that were charged and named in this as being the killers were exonerated. Zimmerman laid on his back, he was getting his head bashed to the pavement as he pulled his sidearm out and shot Trayvon Martin as his skull, as Zimmerman's head was getting bashed. Only after the case was closed, did George Zimmerman, his head was exposed to newspaper, his print, his photo, and showed the back of his head as bloody as could be. That was after it was closed out. But before that, he was found guilty by the media. And it's in the book saying, "This triggered Black Lives Matter." The other individual who shot the young man in Ferguson, that became a battle over a handgun, the police officer's weapon, as the individual fought to regain, to gain that weapon, fought with the police officer, and the gun was discharged, obviously by the police officer, probably pulled the trigger. He was again, he, another instance of exonerated. He was not found guilty, but he, where is he today? Is he still working in Ferguson? I don't believe so. So, but my point I'm making here is, it was in the book, published in the book. Where was the?
Other side.
Well, the other side, the truth of the story, the ending. It wasn't there. And that's a fifth-grade book, I believe. So, yeah, that's, it doesn't belong in the book if it's inaccurate. It's one thing to talk of slavery, and anything else, there was slavery. That's okay. I mean, that's, that's diversity in action. But to put false statements in there and not showing the closure of what truly happened, it shouldn't even have been in there. If you're not going to tell the whole story, don't put in half. And today in the media, this is what we hear, day after day, one side, and on the other side. I'm not going to take sides, but there's always a distortion to gain people to be on, be on my side, be against the other side. And that's what's in that book. And Mrs. Payne spoke of the section when you mentioned Donald Trump.
Yeah, the policy.
How inappropriate to speak of our president, of one of our presidents that way. Thank you.
I think that, too, Tom, you brought up some good points. And, and I'm just looking at policy here, and the policy that I had mentioned, the 7.25 regarding a library items, and this is essentially a classroom library, these are not required, like, curriculum books, just to clear, clarify that as well. It's during their individualized reading time. And it's, it states, you know, current events. So I would consider that current events. It states politics, and, you know, says that "The library shall with no thought towards swaying reader judgment, make this, you know, available." So I, in that situation, I see it as swating, swaying reader judgment and only showing one, one side. So that's why I, I believe that that would violate the policy.
Good point. Good point. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay. All right, please call.
Oh, you know what? Sorry, one more thing. I don't know if this can be done now, but this is a dual vote with collaborative classrooms and then also the ETS textbooks for the Cardinal Works. Is there a way to make those separate votes? Because one is a lot more contentious than the other.
Yes, that is possible.
Okay. I would, I would like to do that if we can.
So...
Someone needs to read it or speak it.
Shall we do a motion on the first part, the Cardinal Works? Do we have a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
First motion carries five zero.
And a motion for the collaborative classroom libraries.
So moved.
Second. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Mr. Tuttle?
No.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion carries three to.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending, recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and C2 through C5, all related human resource matters.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Who, who was that second?
Mrs. Cook.
So who, oh, so Ms. Jesslyn, did you motion?
Yes, I did.
I need to get my ears checked. I have problems.
It's hard when they're down there.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Board of Education report and recommendations?
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, I ask for the approval of the shared food service agreement with the Curtin Local School District.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, I ask for the approval of the shared human resource service agreement with the Curtin Local School District.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Payne? Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, I ask for the approval of the shared payroll service agreement with Kirtland Local School District.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Who's that? Thank you. Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, ask for the approval of the aquatic use agreement for the 2223 school year with Spire Institute and Academy.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Members of the board, ask the approval of the hockey locker room agreement for the 2223 school year for the Menor Ice Arena.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Members of the board, ask for the approval of the resolution to approve and authorize the settlement agreements related to the real estate property tax complaint or appeals.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of board, ask for the approval of the board member in service attendance for the National School Board Leadership Council Ohio Education Summit in 2022.
So moved. Any discussion?
I'm not comfortable with paying for training outside of our Ohio School Boards Association if it's a partisan group, which I believe is to be. The Ohio School Boards Association has been our partner in training for many years. We pay dues to them annually. They can also customize any kind of training that we need or would like. And their services to us have been high quality and consistent. So I think we should limit reimbursement and obviously anybody can attend whatever they're interested in doing, but as far as public reimbursement from using tax dollars, I think it should be limited to OSBA or nonpartisan groups.
I don't know that we've ever done anything outside of OSBA or NSBA. Do you?
My time is short, so.
Not that I would call it a short.
I don't.
I'm not sure if it needs to be limited. However, I'm not comfortable with it as well. After reviewing the training for National School Board Leadership Council, I felt that it was, it was very partisan and it was divisive and I'm not comfortable with that training. I, everyone's welcome to attend whatever they wish to attend, but I don't feel the taxpayers should have to pay for that.
So my concern, first of all, I want to make it very clear that this is, we have reimbursed everybody else for any training prior to now without it having to be voted on. And our policy states that it has to be voted on. So those funds that were paid, were paid almost in violation of our policy. And I find it almost targeting that now that I want to go to a training to represent my constituents and instead of OSBA, which I have gone to OSBA trainings before, I find them very left-sided. They have platforms and legislative platforms where they also push for certain things. And those things that they're pushing for are things that I believe should not happen most time, but I would never stop somebody else from going to what they see fit and standing up for their constituents because we all have different lens that we look at things through. And if you're going to stop me from going to something to represent my constituents to the best of my ability, and it's still within the line of my duties to do that, it's my right and responsibility to be able to go to training as I see fit. And it is a school board leadership council, Ohio summit, it is a training, something that I could find pieces and parts that I could find useful for me to stand up for my constituents. I found pieces and parts useful for OSBA and I think it would also give me a good view for both sides. So I greatly disagree with that statement. And I also don't think it's very fair that we have provided reimbursements before and never, never anybody else had to be voted on for, for training. So I'm disappointed in that and I also questioned, what are we doing with those funds that were reimbursed? They were reimbursed in violation of our policy, so are we, do we have to give those funds back? It's just, it's disheartening the least to prevent any board member from going to the training if it's school board related. And I would never stop anybody else on the stage from doing what they see fit in the line of duty. I'm not doing this because of any other reason than I'm sitting up here and I'm doing something to stand up for my constituents. And so that's really disheartening.
Are we a member of this organization?
Um, we, I don't even think they do like national memberships.
Oh, okay. Is there training that we've, anyone has taken that is of an organization that we don't have a membership with? I know you mentioned that we've had other training.
Yeah, it's all been, it's all been OSBA training, but our policy doesn't say it has to be only be OSBA training. So if we're following our policy, it just says, you know, that, that any approved training, the approved training is us approving it. So I mean, we're just setting precedent.
We're members of OSBA and we've been members. So that's, that's the reason why there wasn't a separate examination. And there's nothing that precludes any person on the board from attending whatever they are interested in attending, but I don't think it's a good idea to set a precedent to have partisan attendance.
So if we say that we need to change our policy then to state only OSBA, because that is not clear in our policy and it does not state that in our policy. So we're looking at a policy change as well as saying, I can't go to this, well, I shouldn't, I can't go. I'm still going, but we're not using any of, of the board funds to, you know, help me get there. I will, I will certainly still pay for myself to go because I find it useful. But it's, it's just disheartening. And I did vote for OSBA. You know, that was an area of contention. OSBA has had a lot of issues in the past with, with pushing ideologies that are left-sided. And I didn't want to say, no, we shouldn't be members of OSBA because I feel like they do have pieces and parts that are, are, you know, acceptable and are of value to me. Just like I find pieces and parts of this other training that I could find value in it. And it's my duty and responsibility and my right to be able to do that.
One of the things that I think is important to clarify is that as members of the Board of Education in this community, we represent everybody, you know? I, I don't look at any citizen of this community as being any different than another in terms of whether it's their politics or point of view. I have a responsibility to listen and try to govern in a way that is sensitive to that continuum of ideas. And so I can appreciate where you might have a group of people for whom you feel particularly called to serve, but by the same token, we all represent every voter in this Menor Schools community.
If, if that was true, then I think that if, if we are saying we represent every voter, I went to the OSBA trainings, which are a little bit more left-sided and I could represent certain issues on there, as seen tonight with House Bill 99, I agreed to that. And I think true is, you know, the same thing is for the other side. I'm trying to get a whole approach and a whole idea on different subjects from different groups. And I don't think we should ever say we can only be part of one group. There's going to be other organizations that come up as well because of certain things that OSBA, you know, are pushing. And so other places are going to, organizations are going to rise up and offer board opportunities for, for us to grow as well. So I just disagree with that in whole. And I also want to know then, you know, if, if those funds are given out and we haven't been following the policy and now we decide we have to start voting on people going to trainings, what are we doing with those funds that were paid, you know, incorrectly?
We'll have to look into that. I mean, I think from the standpoint that we had approved OSBA previously yearly as well as the National School Board Association prior to my arrival, as the board decided this year not to approve NSBA, that may be sufficient enough for the approval of their organizations and the trainings that kind of correspond to that. But we will get an opinion on that from the auditor as well as from.
Our board lawyer?
Yep.
Okay. So they would, so the opinion that we would get from our lawyer would also be on the verbiage in our policy as it states? To see if that would cover it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough.
So what does that mean now?
What does what mean?
What does that mean by going to speak with our attorney to clarify this?
We'll ask the attorney as well as if we can get it, if they are unable to, to get an audit opinion because the auditor would be the one that would determine if the funds in the fiscal year were inappropriately spent on reimbursement with regards to, did we have the appropriate approval by approving them with the consent agenda items that we had approved in the January meeting?
Because essentially they were paid out and we didn't follow the correct process of voting on every single training that, and reimbursement that board members have received until now, when I decided to go to a training.
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I personally don't see an issue with why we can't fund reimbursement. I just don't understand that. I had planned initially to go to it as well, but I had to. I never registered. I would have, but I'm going out of town on a vacation with my daughter and her family and I won't be back available to go that Saturday. And I read the synopsis of the speakers. They have, they speak really well and their topics are very clear. They're not as pointed and directed as one might think they are on the right side, you know, left or right, but open the mind of those who attend and make people think. And that's what training is to do. You don't have to walk out of a training carrying all the luggage that you buy or, you know, and bring back. But to nickel and dime over a policy, Mrs. Payne believes in what she believes, but she's very open-minded and to not grant her the opportunity to be reimbursed and graciously, she had already told me she would pay if they wouldn't reimburse that. I'm just disappointed. It's like, we need broad-minded people on the board and not narrow-minded people.
Are we voting on this or are we tabling it? Where are we at on this?
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
So we're going to vote? No research needs to be done on this. Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
No.
Ms. Jesslyn.
No.
Ms. Breiner.
No.
Motion does not pass, two to three.
I'm going to skip right to the second topic on this. The State Board asks to change preschool children eligible for special education rule. The State Board of Education Integrated Student Supports Committee worked expeditiously with the Ohio Department of Education staff to address issues with the preschool children eligible for special education rule that was implemented in 2021. Stakeholders representing various education-related organizations raised concerns regarding the 50-50 rule. The 50-50 rule means that you put five handicap people and five, or children versus five. So it's 50-50. So let me go on. It required an integrated classroom to maintain at all times 50% of students to be students with disabilities. Acknowledging the difficulty constantly to maintain that threshold, the rule was revised and distributed for public comment. Committee members considered the public feedback, which found 74% of those who responded to be in favor of the revisions. The committee voted to approve the recommended rule revision, which moved the rule to be considered by the full State Board. Normally, a rule that is voted out of committee will be considered by the State Board at the next month's meeting. However, the Integrated Student Support Committee Chair, Dr. Jenny Kilgore, asked the entire State Board to suspend State Board rules to immediately consider the rule. The State Board not only suspended the rule so that it could be considered, but they approved the rule revision. The revision rule increases the maximum number of students with disabilities from six to eight and changes language to allow for 50% or fewer students with disabilities in a public school, preschool, general education, or integrated classroom. At this time, I would like Mr. Porter to expand and expound on this topic so clearly you understand the impact on that program.
Just the ability to maintain 50, 50-50 split at all times is impossible, especially when students transition in, students transition out. If a student moves in, you have five students, five students from each category and somebody moves in, automatically adds, you know, six students. This would have been impossible mathematically to maintain. You know, you would have to have the same fixed students all year. That's not how schools, some students are coming in, some students are leaving, more students are being identified, you know, through the course of a year. There needed to be some flexibility and the fact that the 74% is in here, the fact that it went through the State Board so quickly, I believe it was a no-brainer that the practicality of it didn't, didn't make sense. So it gives preschools some flexibility, you know, to try to maintain sort of a balance, but some flexibility that the balance doesn't have to be a perfect 50-50.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. The next section was in regards to House Bill 99. We've already beat that horse. I'm not going to read it again because I reported it last month and it just coincidentally, the day I reported it, the bill was passed prior to when I spoke in the June meeting. So this is just a report that comes a month later confirming the same thing. So I'm not going to read it again. So that's my legislative report for this evening.
Thank you. Student achievement report, Mrs. Cook.
Yes. During summer break, several of our student groups have had the opportunity to showcase their talents. Our CTE students traveled to Atlanta, Georgia from June 20th through the 24th. Menor Schools sent two competition teams who earned gold at the state level and advanced to the annual national leadership and skill conference to compete in the Skills USA National Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. This is a showcase of career and technical education students where 6,500 students competed. Our attendees did a fabulous job and represented not just Lake Shore Compact, but the state of Ohio. Armani Howard served as a voting delegate where she made business decisions on behalf of Ohio and worked to vote in the 2223 national officers. States are limited in how many voting delegates they can have, so it was wonderful that Armani was able to participate in one of these coveted spots. During the conference, our teams had an outstanding performance, earning 11th place in the nation in entrepreneurship was Project Nifty. Congratulations to Cadence Burr, Zachary Halsted, Gavin Rupert, and Grant Wheelock. Project Nifty is a mobile application that streamlines the process of purchasing NFTs. You can think of an NFT as a digital content with a certificate of authenticity. You can think of an NFT as a digital content with a certificate of authenticity. This team created a business plan that required research for business operations, finance, and marketing aspects of the project, and the team then created a 10-minute presentation. Both the business plan and presentation were delivered at nationals. Our second team, Team Rocket, was a part of the Career Pathways Showcase for Business and IT. Team Rocket created a mobile application to assist when pets go missing. The app allows users to create and update pet profiles, generate posters with embedded QR codes for reporting found pets or pet sightings. This team created not just the app, but an eight-minute presentation and an eight-foot by eight-foot display. The team earned fourth place in the nation. Congratulations to Evie Bennett, Ryan Nichols, and Kias Price. In June, our speech and debate team traveled to Louisville, Kentucky for the National Speech and Debate Tournament, and our top 25 show choir traveled to Disney World. Our summer music programs have held concerts at the middle school level and our high school Mannheim Orchestra is currently working on their skills at camp. We hope that everyone is enjoying their summer and continuing to practice their skills. All middle school and high school students have summer reading assignments and our elementary students are challenged to keep reading throughout the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief Financial Officers' report and recommendations, Mr. Wade.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter. We ended our fiscal year on June 30th. And this slide shows kind of our overall, kind of where we finished off in comparison to our May update. We ended up being about $875,200 better than we had projected in May, and I'll get into kind of why the variances were. We were under revenue by $38,000 and under expenses by $913,666. Mr. Gaskin, I think my clicker is dead, so if you could slide, please. Thank you. Looking at our revenue in comparison to last year in the month of June versus this year, our actual revenue for the month was down by $645,000 approximately, and a lot of this relates to timing as well. And for the year, we were down $765,000 mainly because of lower revenue from the state as we've shared with the new funding model. We knew that the state funding was going to be less this year, but they lowered our expenses in our tuition payments to correspond to that. And we also saw lower than expected and anticipated, we budgeted for this, lower than expected interest payments on our investments. If you could change the slide, please. We were off by $38,466 in all intents and purposes on $106 million. This is not material, so if you could go to the next slide, please. Our actual expenses for the month were up in comparison to last June by $1.8 million. The majority of that was because of additional transfers out that we had to make to fund our roofing projects as well as our paving project. We were, did not budget initially at the start of the year for those roofing projects, but deemed it necessary to add those on to ensure that those roofs that were deemed to be of a high priority were taken care of so we could protect the integrity of the inside of the buildings in those areas, which again were Ridge and Hopkins that are being done this year with as well as a small section over on Bellflower. And the paving project came in higher than anticipated in our budget, and we did reduce the amount of paving that we're doing, but felt it necessary to hit the areas we have. And you can see that, obviously you probably experienced that today coming in, they did finish the south lot and we are now working on the north lot to get that completed. If you look at the year-to-date expenses being up $5.7 million in comparison to last year, majority of this is because of the increase in salaries and benefits based on the negotiated agreement as well as our transfers being up both to the capital improvement plan as well as to the budget reserve to catch up for the budget reserve transfer that was not done in the previous fiscal year. So that accounts for the majority of that. If you would change the slide, please. Overall, in comparison to the May update that we did, we were $913,666 better than expected. A lot of this comes down to timing. We're cash-based accounting. We have, if the PO doesn't, if the bill does not come in and we don't pay the cash out, we don't see the expense. We do think that some of our tuition payments will come in. We've encumbered those funds and that the money will be spent however, and we'll align to that. But we were down also as well as in our, some of our supply spending at the end of the month that we expected to come in, so that supplies weren't needed, so we did not spend that money. So we anticipate that to be an impact. If you'd go to the next slide. Kind of shows the summary of where we're at. On the top chart shows where we expected the revenue and expenditures to be in our September appropriations. We're looking at revenue of about $102.5 million, expenses to be $116.565. Compare that to the last line of that same area where it says June final, where we ended up being revenue at $106 million approximately and $113.67 or $68 million in expenses. I kind of showed the differences as we went through the budgeting process. You know, it's typical that Mr. Wilson had graded himself, so I added that on there just to kind of keep it in a familiar stance with the board. 96.73% revenue comparison to a 97.46% on expenses. When we did the November forecast, we anticipated the revenue to be closer to $104.9 million, expenses to be up a little bit. And you can see that when we did our May forecast, we even revised that even further because we had the full tax collections as well as our state revenue and most of our interest in from our investments looking at about $106.1 million. We ended at, as you see the bottom line, ultimately, we deficit spent this year by $7.6 million. So we anticipated a $13.9 million deficit spend by the time that we closed out the fiscal year, we had reduced that to $7.6 million. And compare that to where we were in the May update, again, that comes about $875,200 as you saw in the previous slides. So all in all, I think we are deficit spending. We were able to slow the deficit spend down drastically through the year with higher-than-anticipated revenues and slowing our expenses down for some of the areas, particularly within the shared, or the purchased services and supplies being lower than we anticipated. If you would change the slide, please. We also approved at the June 30th meeting our temporary appropriations for the next fiscal year, which we are currently in as of July 1st. That is on the slide. Ultimately, this looks a little bit different than we've seen in the past because we changed our policy to only have this done at the, what we call the object level. So we look at those areas that are in the white as what makes up our primary budget for our general fund. Everything that is in blue is the rest of our funds that are not general fund dollars. For example, the OO3, which is that permanent improvement line, is from our PI levy, and we are looking at the appropriations for each of those areas. While this is considered a temporary appropriation, it is at near 100%, which is atypical of what we've done historically in the past. We will do a final appropriations in September like we did, but you can see, one of the things I would point out to the community, as I pointed out to the board, our appropriations for the year, $126 million, which is up $10 million in comparison to this year's appropriations that we initially had in September. The main reason being in the line 900, you see other uses of funds has a substantially higher than typical amount, has an amount of $14.1 million approximately, and that's because the board, at my recommendation, made the decision to approve that. Where we have moved, we will be moving the money, and we have moved the money with the board approval, pending board approval tonight, we will move the money from the general fund to the capital improvement fund, which is the O7O account in blue midway down, to cover the capital projects that we have budgeted in the budget for the next four fiscal years this year, included '23, '24, '25, and '26. We did this because we have committed to those projects. We feel it gives a clearer picture and more transparent picture to the community that we are using money from the general fund to pay for those projects. We did put it into the O7O account because legally, if we put it into the O7O account and the board later decides to increase or to put in front of the taxpayers an increase in the permanent improvement levy, any money that was transferred out of the general fund to the O7O can go back into the general fund and then would increase our cash budget reserve policy, then potentially holding off the need for additional general fund money in the form of an additional operating levy. So with that, we also presented and approved at the June 30th meeting, a June forecasted update in the guise of complete transparency with our finances continuing, has been my mantra at all of these meetings to make sure that we have that for our board as well as our community. After the May meeting, we had approved the negotiated agreements with the classified employees as well as the exempt and administrative contracts for the next three years. We wanted to make sure that those changes were reflected in the update so that we could see the impact on that as we use our forecast to determine how we're going to proceed into the future, as well as the fact that we had updated numbers for our budgets for this year as we saw in the previous slide with the appropriations. So we made those changes to the specific lines that are seen here in our forecast. The revenue lines did not change at all, so I'm only sharing with you tonight the highlights of the expenses. If Mr. Gaskin would change the next slide. The differences that you see on this slide in black or red are the differences in comparison to the May update. So you can see the salaries, which are line 3.010 in personal services, reflected increase in comparison to the May update by $345,000 approximately in '23, $626,755,000 in '24, and so on. Those are because the other negotiated agreements have been added in, as well as the impact of those negotiated agreements on the healthcare concessions that were made by our employees in lines 3.020. We did update the purchased services to reflect the budget that we have in place for fiscal year '23, as well as the supplies and materials in 3.040. The other objects includes the increases that we had into some other areas, specifically, if you look at line 5.010, that shows the increase in the forecast for the money that will be voted on tonight to transfer into the O7O account of the $9.5 million, but you can see a corresponding decrease in the out years because we were forecasting those transfers in the out years. So since we're doing it now in this current fiscal year, we will not have to do those transfers in the out years, and that's why you see the decreasing numbers in the red in fiscal years '24, '25, and '26. So that was voted on and approved and has been, will be filed with the state, excuse me, shortly. From the May update, we showed a favorable impact on the bottom there of $14.7 million in comparison to the November forecast. Mr. Gaskin, if you'd change the slide. The updated forecast has a net impact versus May for a negative $3.4 million, which still gives us a net positive impact in comparison to our November forecast by $11.3 million. So if we look at the forecast update that we have here in June that we approved and you comparison to that to November, what we did this fiscal year plus the changes going forward still have a net impact of about $11.3 million better than we were expecting even in November. So we're still heading in the right direction, so that's why I put this slide on there for the board and the community. Mr. Gaskin, if you would go to this. This is kind of a analytic that we use to kind of gauge where we're at with regards to the need for new money. I put this in here just to show that you can see, we see, it looks like we're deficit spending excessively in fiscal year '23 because of the increased transfers. So you see that little purple diamond in the red, but then you see back in '24, it goes back up into the lower yellow, upper tan area, which is about where we were this fiscal year. So that does mean, I still think we're in sound financial shape where we won't need to rush to a levy in this next fiscal year. The board and the new superintendent and myself can meet to discuss our current financial strategies that we have going on, to look at where we're at and how we're moving forward, and to make adjustments to push that levy off. At the soonest that we would need it would then potentially be '24, but don't forget in '24, we have to pass the renewal levy. As I've shared before, not passing that would have dire impact on the services that we can provide for our students just based on the current educational programming and all the other areas of the strategic plan that we're trying to implement currently. So we will continue to monitor our current spending going into the next fiscal year. The fact that we have negotiated agreements for the next three years, as we've shared back in May and in June again with the board, helps us know where we stand with that, and we can continue to find other ways to find cost-saving reductions, generate additional revenue like we saw tonight with the board's approval of these shared service agreements with both for food service, HR management, and Kirtland, which are gonna bring in over $100,000 a year in revenue for the district at no additional cost, as we continue to find ways to find advertising opportunities with our new scoreboard to reduce the expenses for some of our capital projects moving forward, and we continue to find ways to control costs and be creative in doing that. We hope that we can continue to push the need for additional revenue off as long as Happy to answer any questions on end of the fiscal year appropriations and/or the updated forecast.
Thanks.
Madam President, members of the board, I ask for the approval of the financial statements and items B through G, including the addendum E that was added for the supplemental appropriations in one motion, please.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
I would note one correction. Mrs. Payne did contact me about it, so the student activity accounts, there was a name that was incorrectly left on. Mr. Dudzik is no longer an employee. He should have not been tied to that activity account that has been since updated to be, including Mrs. Nemus, and I apologize about that error.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Justin?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? At this time, on behalf of the board, we'd like to take a moment for a special recognition. Mr. Porter, would you please join me at the podium? As you know, we only give out the Crystal Cardinal Award under very special circumstances, and tonight, the board and I would like to honor you for all you've achieved. I will start by saying thank you. Thank you, Mr. Porter, for your many years of service to Mentor Public Schools, and especially for the past five years where you've done an absolutely outstanding job leading the district as our superintendent. We have been very fortunate to have you in this position and are equally fortunate you are staying in the district as the principal at Sterling Morton Elementary School. There is a lot of commendable work I could mention tonight, but one thing I want to point out for sure is that you've navigated an array of delicate and challenging times within your tenure as superintendent with a kind, selfless, and thoughtful leadership style. In your first year as superintendent, you worked through the task of developing a strategic plan and facilities management plan, which was a huge undertaking. You rallied the community to come together and tackle this work via committee to include input from internal and external stakeholders. Ultimately, the facilities management plan will save the district millions of dollars. Mr. Porter will always, always demonstrates taking special care in decision-making, from placing a high focus on school safety by working closely with Mentor Police and Mentor Fire, to planning an amazing last-minute trip for eighth graders who learned they would be missing out on their Washington, DC trip due to a business going under, to working through the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic over the course of three school years. The board is appreciative of the continuous work. The list could go on and on. There's certainly been a lot to celebrate over the past five years, too. Students... Student and staff successes happen often, and Mr. Porter has always been there cheering our kids, our teams, and our staff on. Supportive is a word that always comes up when people talk about you, Bill. Please know you are so very appreciated by many. Perhaps you can place this cardinal in your new office, and it will serve as a reminder. Good luck in your new role, and thank you again for everything you have done and will continue to do for Mentor Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Breiner. I'm certainly humbled by those, humbled by those words. It's been the honor of a lifetime to serve in this role, and there are a lot of people that I can thank. First and foremost, the board, both past and present, for all of your support through the years. Thank you very much for that. Our employees are incredible, MTA, MCE, our exempt employees, our administrators. It's a giant group of over 1,000 very dedicated individuals who work very hard for the children of the community each and every day, so I have to thank them. Our students, the reason they're here, we have incredible students, and they range from preschool age all the way up through our graduates, with incredible families standing behind them, with incredible support. And it extends, I think, as well to our community, partners, and friends. We have a lot of support in this community, and not every community is like that. I also, you know, have to take time tonight to thank my two families. My work family, which I, you know, I consider the administrative team, who's been there through thick and thin, and a lot of the things you mentioned, Mrs. Breiner, you know, they did much more work on that than I did, so credit where credit is due. But I, you know, I can't give back nearly to that work family what they have given to me and to this district. And my own personal family at home, I think a lot of them may be watching this this evening, and, you know, their love and support has been unconditional in letting me continue, you know, to do a job that takes a lot of time and sacrifice. So, you know, I love them dearly. And I really am looking forward to my new work family at Sterling Morton, which is a great school. And they have, there's an incredible energy there, positivity there, something very special about the building, the students, the staff, the parents and the surrounding community there are very tight-knit. And so I'm very much looking forward to joining that family. But I also, before I leave the podium, I want to wish Mr. Heath good luck, you know, in the role. Now, I've been working closely with him over the last couple of weeks, and I trust he's going to do an outstanding job, you know, continuing, you know, the good work in the district. So good luck, Mr. Heath, but thank you for this award. I'm humbled.
All right, do we have any new business?
I do. I want to bring up something that has been brought to my attention again by several parents in the district due to schools starting up next month. Last year, in the first couple of days of school, some teachers conducted pronoun surveys. These surveys were sent directly to the students by some, not all, of the teachers at the high school. They were sent without any parental consent. Additionally, I have recently discovered that we are also not required to notify parents if their child chooses to go by a different pronoun or gender. So children can go by different pronouns or genders without their parents knowing. How can parents parent effectively if they don't know of a pronoun change? Granted, most parents probably are aware, but for those who aren't, who would be left in the dark, it is an area of concern. It is also concerning for those who do not want their own children asked what gender they would like to be. Many parents are concerned that we are usurping their rights and that based on our trajectory, their middle school or elementary school children will be asked what pronoun they would like to go by. To my knowledge, we have not had this take place yet at these levels, only at the high school. However, I also know we do not have any procedures in place to prevent this from occurring, and we will not be issuing anything to those levels to advise them not to conduct these types of surveys. We are leaving it up to the teachers to make that decision, and that is not comforting to most parents. While I acknowledge that the teachers asking this question are well-intended and may simply want to help those in the minority who want to go by another pronoun than their biological gender pronoun, I also acknowledge that many parents do not feel like it is the school's responsibility to ask their minor child what gender they would like to be, and certainly do not want this type of question completed by their child without their parental consent. The parents and community members that I represent believe that sending a survey like this to all students within a classroom without parental consent is outside of the scope of responsibility of the schools. I believe that, at the very least, a policy that outlines what our procedures are surrounding these pronoun surveys for parents would be helpful in ensuring trust and transparency in our district. Additionally, our policy 7.30 regarding screening, surveys, and physical examinations may apply to this type of survey. If it does, then per the policy, we would be required to notify parents and possibly ask for consent as well. If it doesn't, then I believe we should add gender pronoun surveys to the list to require parents to be notified and consent to the survey prior to them being conducted. At the very least, I believe we should ensure for consent at the elementary and middle school levels. I think it would behoove us to be as transparent as possible with our parents within our district. And with schools starting next month, I believe we owe it to the parents to ensure that their rights are not being violated, and they are being included in these types of surveys that affect their children directly, especially at the elementary and middle school level. Additionally, I think it may help ease some of the tension on this issue, as parents can then just choose if they see it fit for their child to partake in this type of questionnaire. So I would like to bring that up for discussion tonight. I would like to see the gender pronoun surveys being added to our policy 7.30 if it doesn't already fit there.
I would personally like more information about these surveys. Has anyone seen one? Do we know how?
Mr. Porter can confirm that...
Yes, so, you know, I've also heard, you know, I've also, I've also heard that the surveys which include a pronoun question were not, you know, they were not distributed anywhere but at the high school. Again, I think you mentioned, Mrs. Payne, not all teachers gave that survey. We did not encourage or discourage that question on the survey. In my mind, it was an attempt by some teachers to respectfully be sure that, excuse me, at the start of a new school year, that they address students using preferred pronouns. That may be especially helpful when our high school teachers have between 100 and 150 new students to meet at the start of a new school year. I don't anticipate the pronoun question being asked at the elementary levels, and again, I also have heard concerns at this point about the question being asked at the middle school at this time.
Could we get some direction on that, at least, you know, to put the parents at ease then? Can we send something to the principals at those levels at least saying, hey, you know, can we not do the pronoun surveys for these levels?
I would, I would not be comfortable encouraging or discouraging that.
Even at the elementary level? Or middle school? So either one, you're okay?
No. But again, I don't anticipate that being asked at the elementary level especially.
So that's why I'm coming with this policy change, because I strongly feel that at the elementary and the middle school level, we should not be asking pronoun surveys.
So are you saying you'd be okay for the high school level?
Obviously, I still have my own thoughts on that, but I feel much stronger. I'm like a 10 out of 10, we'll say, on the elementary and the middle school. The high school, if somebody was a 10 out of 10 to keep it in, I'm not at a 10 out of 10 on the high school to fight it as much as I am at the elementary and middle school levels.
I'm in total agreement with that. Inappropriate for...
Elementary and middle school.
Yes.
Any other comments?
No comments. More information is needed.
I, I'm in agreement. We need a policy on that.
Yeah, at least for the elementary, middle school students.
Sir, you can wait till public comment session, please.
These are, these are children, guys. Like, these are kids who don't even know any... Right. They're learning, they're learning about pronouns, and they, to ask an elementary school child what gender they want to be is putting something that they have no idea what it even means behind that, and I just think you are violating parents' rights on that to the maximum if we decide that we cannot make a policy at least for middle school and elementary school kids. And this is one of the reasons why my children are homeschooled, and I'm sitting on the board and I pulled my kids out of this district because of things like this. I don't feel like that is right. I'm at a 10 out of 10 on elementary school, 10 out of 10, middle school, high school, okay. But I feel very strongly on this, and I don't, I personally don't think it should be that hard a decision to make, but that's my personal opinion.
It's not being asked at the elementary or middle school. I mean, I'm not aware of surveys that are asking about pronouns for...
So if it is asked, though, the problem is also that our protocol is to not tell parents, we are not required to tell parents. So if it's asked at the elementary school or at the middle school, and then we also don't tell that parent that we asked it, and tell that parent that, hey, this child is wanting to be, to be called a different, you know, gender pronoun, possibly a different name, then we're hiding things from the parents, and I just don't think that is something that we should be able to do. I don't think that is the place that we want to go with parents in our district, especially not at the elementary or the middle school level. These parents still have rights. They have rights to say what their minor children should be called.
I'm a little at a loss with what the process is because we don't have language written today. We don't have anything to vote on. I don't know what, what we're expected to do at this point, so.
Well, we have policy 7.30 regarding screening, surveys, and physical examinations, so maybe the next step is if we think there's enough support that we could possibly look into that policy and add gender pronoun surveys to that policy for consent for parents.
If there's enough support, we can certainly, you know, look into adding language to that effect.
Well, it seems to me there would be support if two board members speak up to this issue. A policy revision could be written and brought to a vote. We did that with House Bill 99. Two board members went to Mr. Porter and mentioned it needed to be revised and made stronger. And so what Annie is proposing, and I agree, is that that policy has to be defined, it's spoke to. It should not be K through 8, asking them what pronoun they'd like to be called and not providing that information to their parents, that students have selected a different pronoun.
Annie, are you suggesting a new policy or revising an existing policy?
I would, I would just like to see, that way it covers everything. Policy 7.30 regarding screening, surveys, physical examinations added with gender pronoun surveys in there as well for consent of parents.
So that's across the district, including the high school?
That's how I would propose it. If somebody was at a 10 out of 10, they don't want the high school having consent and just notification at the high school, that this could be something that your child could be asked. I'm okay with that. But elementary and middle school consent needs to be there.
So at this time, you're not proposing that we would be informing parents, then?
I'm proposing that parents would have to have consent prior and opt their children in.
So for all intents and purposes, they'd be notified in advance?
Exactly.
For all grades?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
All grades?
I'm okay with...
No, I understand, I understand. Parents are notified that the survey is happening. I understand that, but then of the results or what is the next step?
Yeah, I think parents for minor children, you know, if we write it for elementary and middle school and we ask for consent, and then their child says, yes, I want to be, you know, opposite of my biological gender, and I want to be called a different name, that the parent then has the right to know that information, especially with suicide rates for transgender children being 30%. I think it's very important and imperative that parents are aware if their child decides to be, you know, transgender or called a different pronoun. I think that's very important.
Do you want to work with the superintendent on the wording of that, then?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Any other new business? And do we have hearing of the public on any item?
Leah McCullough, oh, where am I on? Leah McCullough, 4680 Homewood Drive. I did have kids in the district. I have now pulled them. I homeschooled them for the first year. Same reason, pronouns, talking about sexuality, talking about things the kids have no idea or even should be around. I'm supposed to be making the choice to sending my kids back, and I come to these meetings time and time and time again, and it's the same thing on repeat. You're not listening to this community. I have three women up there, the president and the last two on the end, they have their own agenda, and it's disgusting. It's called grooming, and it's not appropriate. It shouldn't be in the schools. If you're telling every God-fearing person up here that they're not allowed to talk about God, don't, don't put scripture in, but we have to talk about sexuality and pronouns to our children? I'm telling you, I live by Sterling Morton. My girls and my son are still friends with middle schoolers and the elementary. You know how many of them are confused about their sexuality? Not my kids. Do you know how many kids are talking about making out, having sex, F this, F that, dropping all these in the schoolyard? I take my kids up there, and I am listening to this from these little kids. It's truly disgusting, and it's happening within our school, and a lot of the parents are just letting it happen. I, for one, am not doing that. I am homeschooling to keep them out of this nonsense. You guys are disgusting, and the ideology that you guys are trying to portray is just garbage. I'm ashamed of you guys. I don't normally speak at these things because I am, I'm not good at speaking in public, but after what I've witnessed tonight, I can stay silent. So what I have to say will be short, but not necessarily so sweet.
Can you please just introduce yourself first?
Oh, sorry. Rayanne Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
To the three leftist board members, and you know who you are, you have shown your true colors tonight. I have never seen such a blatant showing of hypocrisy. As long as it's something you approve of, the rules don't apply. Speaking to putting books in the library that clearly violate your own policy... Speaking to putting books in the library that clearly violate your own policies and allowing others to attend meetings with reimbursement and requiring no vote, but not letting Annie go. Hypocrisy at its finest. But thank you, Mr. Tuttle, for standing up for Annie tonight. We appreciate that. And thank you, Annie and Mr. Tuttle, for standing up for us.
Dale Fellows, former Lake County Commissioner, was interested in the meeting tonight and observing exactly what happened tonight was very intriguing to me. And it started off with a little history lesson that you need, and that is flag etiquette and the Pledge of Allegiance. There is one way to do the Pledge of Allegiance. There is no pause between one nation under God. It is one phrase. So when you do the Pledge of Allegiance going forth, make sure that you do it the correct way. It is one nation under God, all one phrase. Okay? That's lesson number one. Number two, the hypocrisy was, as pointed out by the previous speaker, when you, Ms. Jessling, and others spoke of how you want to add diversity, and you wanted to be inclusionary and that, and yet vote against some other person's desire to go to a different training session. It's totally illogical and intolerant, intolerant. And I'm sure that you don't, you feel like you are a tolerant person, but you can see the hypocrisy in your voting tonight. It is very, very clear. I've had the pleasure of being here in this Performing Arts Center and in Mennar High School over numerous years, back in the day, to speak to your government classes and to talk civilly and in great contrast to what some of you all are doing up here. You need to stop the bullying of other board members and start to actually, actually not talk the talk, but walk the walk that you say when you want to talk about inclusionary and tolerance and that, and yet you aren't. So you need to look in the mirror and think about exactly what you guys were doing tonight. And your votes are going to have consequences, and unfortunately, they're going to be bad consequences. And I feel bad for those people that you're going to affect and have affected adversely by your actions tonight.
Roger Jewell, 7418 Hart Street, longtime resident of Mennar since 1977, graduated here in 1983. Annie and Mr. Tuttle, thank you. Thank you for at least trying to represent the majority of the Mennar School parent population. Thank you. For the others, can't even express how disappointed you just made a whole group of people feel tonight. After hearing and listening to the viewpoints of not just this group that's here, but many others that just don't have time to come or couldn't come, whatever it might be, the crowd is growing, and it's going to keep growing. We're going to see to that come election time, or reelection time. We're going to see if we can make some changes. And I really, I would encourage one of the last three people on the board to really think about resigning, because you're not representing us at all. And it really is, as they put it, it's really disgusting. And it's really disheartening, and it's very sad. You owe the children more than that. You owe the parents that are paying taxes for these schools more than that. And you owe the Mennar community more than that. You're better than that. And what's on display tonight should not be representing anything. You guys don't represent me at all, at all. And it's truly sad. Annie Towns, thank you for at least trying. Appreciate it.
Hello, I am Lindsay Wall, 7250 Beechwood Drive in Mennar. I'm going to pull an Ann Anderson here. I was halfway home, and I had you guys on the live feed in my car, and I stopped, and I turned around, and I came back. I don't know what happened tonight in this room, but it has been, excuse my language, a shit show for a long time. And tonight was just way different, way different than the last year of board meetings, with everyone going back and forth in this room and then the different opinions. But, one, I want to thank the board for being themselves, speaking up for what they believe in, all of you, every single one of you up there. Thank you for expressing how you actually feel about topics, bringing up issues that you feel need to be brought to light and offering suggestions on how to fix them. That's great. Getting up here, though, as a member in our community, as a parent of one of our, two of our students, I would never get up here and degrade any of you. You all hold a position that's important to the entire community. And I'm very sorry that tonight and many other nights that this continues to go on. It's not fair at all. It's not fair to you guys. It is not fair to us in this room, and it's not fair to our students, our kids. What's going on right now is being videotaped, and it's live. My mother-in-law, I gave her the link for this, and she's sitting there watching my kids so that I can be there, which means my kids are witnessing this. We're setting the example for our kids. You want to talk about bringing things to the forefront and how it's being forced and brought up in schools? We're making issues out of non-issues. I've said this so many times. The kids don't know about half of the things until they hear us talk about it, until we have a problem with it, until we see this little minimal thing, and we only talk about that minimal thing here at the microphone, month after month after month, and badger them and tell them they're not listening to us. They are. Look at them. That's all they're doing, taking notes. They're listening. There's that many people up there for a reason, to vote on topics so that it's, everyone gets to contribute. Everyone has a different opinion. Getting up here and degrading the people up there is not okay. It's bullying. We have to stop. Stop the hate. Stop the divisiveness. This is just, tonight was not okay, and I feel really bad for Mr. Heath, because he got a really ugly picture of what is to come. It has to change, guys.
Thank you.
It's not fair. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
Brandon Towns, Marine Parkway, daughters that go to Orchard Hollow. So let me repeat something I said before, which is that truth matters. And I woke up early this morning to a message that said there was something online, and it was a lie, and it was shared with our community. And for me, it's unfortunate that we have sides, but we have sides that are pushing lies in reference to what the Colin Kaepernick book said. And I think we have to get to the point where we're able to say, like, there's truth and there's lies, and we have to acknowledge it and allow that to be the center of our conversations. And I want to just remind and thank the board for standing for justice, for standing what's right, for inclusivity, for diversity, for equity, because it's important. It's epically important. And I think that we talk a lot about safe spaces in education, and I've said it before and I'll continue to say it, more than safe, we need to be good spaces. And when I say that, I don't mean that people shouldn't feel safe, but behaviors shouldn't be safe here. And behaviors that exclude certain students and children should not be safe here. Actions and decisions that make students feel that they're not welcome here should not be safe. So I want to thank you for making the decision today that our students, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, SES, that they can be safe, that they can be seen in the materials in the classroom, because that matters. And I think it was said a little bit ago, that you really can't control how our students or our kids will identify. But the decision that we've made today made schools safe. So even when parents say, I want to control how you identify, like, you can't. But we made it safe for our students to come to our school and be safe. And I really appreciate that. So even if we, some of us sit here today and we denounce the decision, the kids aren't going to be safe at home, but where will they be safe at? They will not be safe at school, and I appreciate that. And the last thing I'll say is, there's a difference between informative texts and persuasive texts. And if we want to push education and literacy, we have to know the difference. Informing is not persuasion. And for those who say that you're going to be voted out or the levy's not going to pass, we'll make sure it does. We support our Mennar School, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to move into executive session to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent?
That I'm president. I would like to request that we not do the remainder of the executive session tonight. I think it's been a very heated night, and I don't think anybody is going to be in the right frame of mind to have the kind of conversation that Mr. Porter deserves. Plus, it's also very, very late, and we've been here since 5:30. So I would like to give him the time that he deserves for the remainder of his review. And I think that we all, you know, having a break and coming back on a different day would probably be beneficial.
So we have two weeks to reschedule.
I'm okay with that. I can make time whenever. I just don't feel like right now is the right time.
Okay. Well, first, is everyone in agreement with rescheduling?
It's fine with me. If ever my schedule would be, well, I'll for it, but I don't know if Mr. Porter's would.
Yeah, there are some dates that could work.
Do we want to see if we can agree on a date to get back together?
Sure.
Bill, what do you have?
I'm thinking we'll need...
We're looking in the evenings...
After 5:30?
The week of the 25th.
I'm free almost any evening that week.
We have that meeting on the 26th. How does that work?
On the 26th?
Yeah.
I could, we could...
How long do you think that meeting will take?
Half hour.
Okay. How's the 26th look, Tuesday?
Yeah. That works for me as well.
Is that good for everybody?
Works for me.
Like 6:00, 6:15?
Perfect.
Is that good?
Yep.
6:00 PM.
Let's do 6:15, just to be safe, if you don't mind, because we have the, we're going to have that records commission meeting at 5:30 that I put in my Friday update.
Okay. Should we do it in the Cardinal Room at the board office?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll just meet there afterwards. Everybody got that?
What time? 6:15.
6:15 on the 26th of July.
In the board conference room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Please call the room.
Who was the motion?
Me.
Hi. Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.